I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for their pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I open up the public hearing, I'd like to go over the rules for the public testimony. Purpose of this, to accept testimonial evidence, non-question-and-answer period, questioning limited to the members of the Board of County Commission. The rules of general decorum apply. No personal attacks or outbursts. Persons not complying with the rules of general decorum, as stated, may be asked to remove themselves from the hearing room or may have their speaking time terminated. This hearing will not exceed 240 minutes total from the time of opening the public hearing, further limited to 120 minutes for testimony in favor of the application and 120 minutes of testimony in opposition of the application. Three minutes per person other than the applicant. The rule to be strictly applied in order to allow the Board to hear from as many persons as can be heard during the time allotted. Person speaking must be recognized by the Chair prior to speaking and shall identify themselves by name and address. The order in which we are going to allow speakers to be the applicant or agent, persons or agent in favor of the application, persons or agent opposed to the application. Persons will be owning property within a 1,000-feet notice area, then the persons owning property or residing on the truck route area, then persons designated as agent or for use of donated time. So with that, we will open up the public hearing for Lenape Sand Quarry and Crystal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Before you have a consideration to approve a special use permit for Resolution 2020-23, the special use permit, as you know, is for the quarrying and mining of sand located near 166th and Lenape. A little bit of history on this parcel. As we know, the zoning of the parcel is I-3. It's heavy industrial. It's been zoned I-3 since at least 1962 when the county first engaged zoning. The requested use is allowed with a special use permit, subject to conditions. Staff's opinion is that the golden factors, which are what we evaluate special use permits, are met with the recommended conditions from staff. This request was originally submitted in January of 2019. It was presented to the Planning Commission on January, sorry, July 10, 2019, so nearly a year ago. The Planning Commission considered a recommendation of approval, however, that recommendation failed by a three-to-four vote, resulting in a recommendation of denial. The Planning Commission stated they had a couple of concerns. The primary concern was the route, specifically the road, and the ability for the road to handle the traffic and safety. They also indicated that there was insignificant economic gain to the county, however, we do not do economic analysis in the Planning and Zoning Department. That was one of the reasons, though, that the Planning Commission gave for denial. During the public hearing in July of 2019, there were substantial concerns raised about the proposed route and whether or not it was safe to handle the truck traffic. The engineer of record for Call Valley stated that they had concerns about the route as well. Due to that, the county went back to the table and asked for a third-party engineering review of the traffic impact study that was originally submitted. During that time, it came back that there were significant deficiencies in the submitted traffic impact study, which again was signed and sealed by their engineer of record. At that time, the county engaged the help of Olson, our consulting firm, to help to develop the template for a traffic impact study. In addition, they also required structures and drainage study and a pavement analysis. These studies have been very, very thoroughly reviewed by staff and by Olson over the last nine months, and as you all know, we've spent considerable time and money evaluating these. These reports have been accepted by Olson and by staff, however, we have a difference of opinion when it comes to the route. As we all know, this is the proposed route. Along the proposed route, the applicants are now, they are now proposing to have a private drive, which would take some of the traffic off of Golden, or sorry, off Lenape Road and off of 166th. That is a private agreement. Just so the county, so the commission understands, the only route that has been reviewed by Olson and by county staff is the route before you. No other route has been reviewed. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions. As you know, our recommendation is that the entire haul route be completely replaced to county standards prior to the applicants engaging in activities on the property. Failure to replace the haul route prior to operations poses a significant risk to the public health, safety, and welfare. That's all that I have. If you have any questions, of course, I'll answer them. The applicants are here. We'll answer any questions you may have as well.
Commissioners, have any questions? And Crystal?
I have a question. Crystal, number six on the golden factors is relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare by destruction of value of the applicant's property as compared to the hardship of our other individual landowners. Is that the public health provision that you're citing?
Correct.
And there's another part of the golden factors was the suitability of the uses compared to the usages that are currently there? Was that taken into factor by the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so it's currently used for agriculture, however, it also has large sand deposits, which of course are oftentimes found along the river, which that's where you dredge for sand and mine for sand. So it is a suitable use. It's also zoned appropriately for that use.
And one of the usages of the area is also large country estates, correct?
North of the subject property, it's zoned rural residential two and a half, yes, a half-mile north.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Crystal? Okay. Then are we ready for the applicant to give a presentation? Do you have your name?
Yes, Justin Joel and Jessica McKinney. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Quite unusual to be here with masks on, but Ms. McKinney and I are attorneys with a law firm in Kansas City, Shuck, Hardy &amp; Bacon, and we're here on behalf of the applicant, Call Valley Company. Also appearing here today on behalf of the applicant are Dan Hayes and Zach Cope. First of all, if you can't hear me at any time during a presentation, I would ask that you let me know, and I'll be glad to take off my mask. And of course, if you have any questions or comments concerning what our presentation provides, please feel free to ask.
We've been allowing people to take their masks off when they're speaking, if you wish.
You can take your mask off.
You can take it off while you speak.
If you want.
I can see. Okay, thank you. First of all, we want to thank the Commissioners for listening to our presentation tonight because we do want to go through what we consider to be a very detailed presentation, and I think everyone should have a book in front of you, which sets forth the slides that have been prepared. And we're going to try to set forth facts rather than innuendo, rumors, or supposition that we believe supports the application made by Call Valley Companies to get it to S U P approved. First of all, the decision by the Commissioners tonight will greatly impact this county for many years to come. We can't deny the impact economically of the COVID-19 pandemic on every area of the country, especially in rural areas, and there's been a loss of revenues, taxes that have set back projects going forward for many years. As we will discuss tonight, the granting of the S U P to Call Valley will generate additional revenues and taxes, and there's a hope that once this area gets opened up, other industries and commercialization will develop as well, which will increase the tax base and revenues for this county, which will add to the betterment, welfare, and the good of the residents as well. I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the staff. We've been at this with the staff for two years. I cannot say anything but highly, high comments about Crystal and her staff throughout this entire process. We may disagree on some of their recommendations and some of the processes that we've had to go through, but Crystal and her staff have been nothing short but extremely professional to us, and Crystal, I want to take this opportunity personally, thank you on behalf of not only Call Valley, but Ms. McKinney and myself. The residents have set out over the two-year process their concerns, fears, and issues, which they're entitled to raise, and they've done an admirable job doing that, and Call Valley and Ms. McKinney and I respect that. One of the jobs that the staff was given by not only this commission, but the Planning Commission, was to go out there and listen to their complaints, listen to their concerns, and give their recommendations as to whether or not this S U P should be granted. And before I get into our presentation, I should just state the obvious. Two occasions, the staff has recommended approval of the S U P with conditions. So first time we came before the Planning Commission was about a year ago, and the staff has seven and a half months to review the application, to make certain demands and requests for information to Call Valley, and to listen to the concerns and issues raised by the residents. The staff is also bound with requirement that if there were certain approvals from state, local, and government authorities, they were to advise Call Valley about those concerns and notify us that all necessary approvals had not been received. In reviewing the application and approving the application, the staff is telling you that all necessary approvals from any regulatory agency, state, local, or federal have been received and have been in favor of this particular project. So the staff in June of 2019 approved the route, the eastern route. Originally, this was going to be the western route that was going to be approved, but a couple days before, they went to the eastern route and they assessed an impact fee to be paid by Call Valley for this particular road of $107,800 per year. They also set out certain conditions, as they did in the current recommendation, and Call Valley was willing to agree to comply with each of those recommendations and conditions that were set forth in the staff's approval of June 12, 2019. So we go forward to today's date, the staff now has also approved again the project, and all the conditions they have set out here, Call Valley is willing to comply with and meet, with the exception of the construction of a new road. And we're going to get into that because we think the request to construct a new road is not supported by any documentary evidence, study, report, or analysis that's been provided to anybody in this particular case. And we also think it's arbitrary and capricious and punitive to expect the applicant to build a brand-new road before it opens for operation that can be used by anybody, any of the future development area, the commercial and industrial users of this area. We're building a brand-new road, which doesn't exist even now, for the residents of that particular area.
Have you read the recommendation by our county councilor?
Yes.
About the road?
Well, the recommendation, I don't know if we've received a copy of his recommendation, but we have. We talked to the county.
Well, if you haven't received a copy, I'll just read it to you. The purpose of this memorandum is to bring to your attention a short synopsis of the legal responsibility of the county regarding the design, construction, or improvement of roads under the controls of jurisdiction of the county. The Kansas Torque Claims Act generally provides that a county is liable for claims against it, just as a private person would be. Consequently, the county can be held liable for the defective condition of a county road in certain circumstances. As applied to the S U P application of Call Valley sand and gravel pending before you, if you are made aware of a defect in design or condition of a county road created through the proposed S U P, the county could be exposed to liability for accidents or claims arising out of that defect. Kansas law does provide, for an exception, to the potential liability to the county. KSA 75-6104 provides, in part, "A government entity shall not be liable for damages resulting from the plan or design or construction of an improvement of public property road if the plan or design was prepared in conformity with the generally recognized prevailing standards in existence at this time such plan or design was prepared. In the event that the county would require any improvement to any road in response to the S U P of Call Valley, the improvement should be done in conformity with the recognized and prevailing standards existing at the time of such improvement. The Board has been divided with an engineering analysis regarding proposed improvements to county roads and will be affected by the S U P of Call Valley. I counsel the Board to accept the recommendations contained in the analysis as the best means to reduce the potential exposure of liability arising from any road improvements undertaken." In essence, we need to improve that road before you begin doing your work.
Well...
Per our county councilor.
If the county councilor's memo was given to you with the intent that the county road does not meet the current standards and requirements that are set forth under the statutes, then the county has that liability anyway. It's not precluded from liability or exempt from liability if the roads do not meet the standards set forth by any regulatory...
This is the recommendation from our council.
Okay. I listened to Crystal's presentation here today. Not one document was presented where there was a study showing that entire route needs to be rebuilt in order for the state, in order to comply with the statute.
Well, that seems to be the recommendation of the staff and the county councilor.
Right, but that recommendation has to be based on facts. It has to be based on analysis, studies, and reports, and they don't have that. In fact, what we're going to get into our presentation, Commissioner, is that Call Valley went out and did those pavement studies, and they did the traffic studies. And they came back and they found that road is, has a useful life of at least another 10 years, that it doesn't have to be replaced, that it has to be, the best way to proceed is for the county to continue with its obligation of chip and sealing, and when necessary, applying additional aggregate in certain areas that don't meet the standards for the roads, and then at some point in time, there's going to be a mill and overlay. That's what the test studies results show.
Have you read the Olson report?
Yes, I've read the Olson report.
Okay, and that's, they agree with the recommendation?
I understand what Olson did, but they disregarded the facts that were given to them by the other studies. And what can it...
You know, we have to go by our professional staff, so.
Okay.
Anyway, proceed.
Could you let him go on with his presentation, Mr. Stevens?
I think that when you look at the staff on twice, they've come up with the conclusion that approval of this S U P based upon the conditions complies with all public health, safety, and welfare, and is unlikely to be detrimental to the public, and the proposed use will provide jobs and necessary good for the residents and for the county. They also talked about the increase in taxes and the increase in revenues which will be generated by this project and by the future industrial and commercial development in this area. All due respect to Mr. Frederick, he bases comments not on any factual basis of what's going on here, and he disregards the facts that we're going to be producing here from county officials as to the economic benefit and gain that will be received by this county immediately and going forward.
So the Height study that he cited, you disagree with the Height study?
From Auburn University?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think there's any evidence that Auburn came up here and did any analysis on the value and economic effects this project will have in Leavenworth County.
Okay.
I think it also should be pointed out that there is no residence within a half-mile of the proposed plant, which we talked about would have the greatest impact. These are larger plots of land, so they're not congregated, small parcels of land where the value's going to be decreased. And further you get away from this project, the less likely there's going to be a decrease in value. There's also a misconception here, I think, that needs to be set aside. If this project gets approved by this body, Call Valley is not going to immediately open up a 220-acre plant. There's a process that has to go through. First of all, Call Valley has to go out and purchase the equipment, which is going to take time. They've got to go out and they've got, they're going to start with about 20 to 25 acres of this 220-acre lot, and they're only going to develop 10 to 15 for the actual pit where the water is going to be, and then 10 to 15 acres is going to be used for the plant operations and for the storage of sand. That's not going to take place for up to 18 to 24 months after approval is received. This doesn't go into effect, and not all 220 acres are going to be adversely affect from the day that this project gets approved. It'll take time. During that time period, Call Valley's going to have to construct a private drive across the property, and one of the benefits of what Call Valley has done by purchasing the old land or property, they're going to reduce its use of the county road from 4.2 miles to 3.3, or almost a 20% reduction in its use of the road from the route that was suggested by the county. In addition, there are certain improvements, widening of roads, and other requirements, signage requirements that Call Valley is going to be required to do immediately, which Call Valley has agreed to do, and that will take time. So this process...
Is that a change in your original proposal before the Planning and Zoning Commission, the change of the road?
Yes, we acquired that. We acquired that road in order to help take some of the burden off this entire 4.2-mile route.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission did not consider that possibility?
No, we didn't know we could buy the property a year ago, but we were able to purchase that property. And it'd be hard for me to imagine the Planning Commission would have any objection to that because it reduces the use of .9 acre, .9 miles of the route.
But it's a change in your proposal.
It's a change in your proposal, but it's a change that's also taken into consideration by the staff. They've been well aware of that from the get-go, that we were trying to purchase that property, and if so, we were going to construct a private driveway. They gave us their thoughts and comments on their private driveway, so it's no surprise to the staff when they came up with their recommendation to approve this particular project.
I think most of this is covered in the slides, so I think maybe hold the questions till...
It would be appropriate to let them finish their presentation.
Well... I'm four, and I think they're 60s.
Let me put it this way, if the staff is going to say they were surprised by this route, it's contrary to the documentation they've provided to us and to our conversations with the staff on numerous occasions, including with Olson engineers. Okay, so we're now at the point where they went over the golden factors that have to be considered by this particular Board before you deny or approve the application. And they said in their conclusions that approval of this project's subject conditions satisfy the golden factors. If the golden factors are met and the Board is arbitrary or capricious in denying an application, that subjects the county to potential liability and to further court consideration as to whether or not the Board acted in a capricious and arbitrary manner. So I'm going to have, Ms. McKinney's going to talk about the golden factors, and then we're going to get into the economic good benefits and also the road construction here.
You've heard from the county staff that's reviewed the project, the data, the studies, the concerns that have been raised by citizens throughout the project, and I won't relabor the point because you've heard from it, about it today. I know you've read the report with the staff's recommendation, but the conclusion is that the golden factors are met for this project to be developed. And just a brief summary is the property is zoned for this use, I-3, heavy industrial. It's floodway property. Right now, it's primarily an agricultural use, but the proposed use, again, is allowed with an S U P on this industrially-zoned property. The staff has reviewed the studies, has reviewed the concerns, and their conclusion is that the proposed use will provide jobs, it will provide necessary good. The operation will result in increased tax revenue for the county, and the public health, safety, and welfare is not likely to be detrimentally affected. And as we've talked about today, those studies and data and concerns have been reviewed twice and twice have been approved by the county staff. Now, the route that will be used for this project is what we're talking about in large part today, and that's because that's really the one point where there is any disagreement on moving forward. And to give some history and some context on what has happened with respect to the proposed route, there were two routes that were originally looked at for this particular project. There was one to the west, and there was a route to the east. And the route to the west was originally the preferred route. That route is a 3.8-mile route, and the initial recommendation for using that route was for Call Valley to pay an annual roadway impact fee of $93,300 using the western route. Now, there was never any recommendation or discussion of building a new road, tearing out the current road, or replacing it. The discussion and the understanding was that there would be an impact fee of $93,300. Now, three business days before the hearing, before the Planning Commission, that route, the recommendation with respect to the route to be used was revised, or it was changed, and the county suggested using the eastern route. With respect to the eastern route, that route is, was 4.2 miles, and the annual roadway impact fee that was recommendation, that was recommended by county staff and its engineer was $107,800. Again, there was no discussion of tearing out a road, replacing a road, that any, anything of that magnitude would be necessary, required, and it was simply not, not part of the discussion. Instead, the discussions were around an impact fee of $107,800 for a 4.2-mile route to the east.
Was any reasoning provided why the change so close to the meeting?
It might be the shortest route to the wet plant that Call Valley had in another area, by going that route, the eastern route. So it's a shortening the route altogether as to the amount that has to be traveled. So after the Planning Commission, there was a request for additional traffic and pavement studies, and Ms. McKinney, myself, as well as other representatives of Call Valley, met with the staff up here and Mr. Blank, it's Mitch, Mitch from Olson Engineering, and we had a discussion with him, and we offered, Call Valley said, "Let's kind of cut through all the chase." Call Valley offered to have the county go out there and do the traffic studies and the pavement studies, so we wouldn't be criticized for the manner in which Call Valley conducted these studies. We agreed to pay for the county's expense, and the county refused to do it. We go to Olson Engineers who's sitting there and said, "Okay, what if we retain you, we'll pay your costs, you go out there and do the studies exactly the way you want to, do the pavement studies, do the traffic studies, and that'll be the result of what's going on." And the Olson Engineers refused to do that as well. So what did Call Valley do? Went out and retained an outside company to do a pavement study, Call Valley and Engineers. It's an unrelated company, has nothing to do except the name is Call Valley. There's no connection in any way between the ownership of our clients. And so they hired an independent company to come out and do the borings to determine the pavement capacity. And once again, we said to Olson, to the staff, "Tell us where you want those borings conducted," because we knew if we came up with our own sites where those tests were to be conducted, we'd be criticized, we didn't pick the right site, we didn't do the right testing, and we didn't do it at the right time of day. And Olson Engineering gave us the locations of where the boring tests were to be conducted. And Call Valley Engineers went out there and did the boring testing, and when they did the boring testing, they came back that the road is in good condition, it can continue, it's not deteriorating to the point where it needs to be replaced, it has a useful life of at least another 10 years, subject to the county continuing to do its chip and seal program, which it has done every three years out in that area. There's nowhere in the Call Valley Engineering Report that states that the entire roadway has to be replaced in order for that road to be in good condition. has to be replaced in order for that road to be in good condition. And we have here today, to appear in front of you, Jeff Fransen, who wrote the report for Call Valley Engineers, who can answer any questions you have concerning his report and his analysis. Then we go fast forward after we give these reports to the county and-
Before you go fast forward, just a question on that. Are you saying that the county, that you would prefer that the county make these arrangements in the initial stages of this?
I'm suggesting, Commissioner, that we made that proposal to the staff and to Olson Engineering to avoid the exact situation we're in today. We will pay you to go out and do these reports, this analysis, these studies, so you don't come back and second-guess us, money more to quarterback us than just disagree with our results, just for the sake of it. Go out and do it, see what you come up with.
Okay, and we'll question staff about that later, but I just want to get that down as a question.
And I can tell you it was done in the meeting in the staff's office here, and I think there were several people from the county present, and our offer was refused. And, you know, I can understand why, but the bottom line is, they told us where to go do these boring tests for Call Valley Engineering. We didn't pick these on our own. We were given specific directions by Olson Engineering as to where to do it, and those tests were performed at the exact locations where we were told.
And I think we'll have a chance to question staff at the end, so we'll ask about that.
And we're going to reserve about 20 minutes of our presentation so that we can, you know, give another chance to respond to anything that we hear from the staff or from residents at the end. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We got to get there, though.
Yeah, we're going to get there, we're going. So in January of 2020, we're at another meeting at Crystal's office, and for the first time we receive an oral proposal setting out a very dramatic and drastic change in what we believe to be the county's position at that point in time. Without any supporting documentation, reports, or documents, or analysis of any kind, the proposal that was given to Call Valley was, tear out and start and construct a new roadway before you begin any operations there, pay that money upfront to the county before you even know what the cost and expense is. And by the way, as set forth in the county report, those costs could go up beyond what you're even able to allocate. So what they were saying is, for the first two years of this project, while Call Valley's getting started, before any revenues being generated from this plant, we have to pay for costs of a brand-new road for this entire 4.2-mile route. No documentation was provided to Call Valley at that meeting to say, "We're basing this opinion based on this particular documentation or report." That wasn't provided to us, or that the entire route needed to be torn out to avoid any liability that the county may have. Nothing was provided to us except for that report, or comments from staff. Now, what that entailed is, not only do we have to put all this money aside to build a road, we don't know how much that's going to cost, because first we have to get the studies and the engineering, put the money in the bank, but that's going to require relocation of utilities along that route. In addition to that, you're going to have to condemn the land that these residents own, which would be totally unfair to them to lose their land for a road they didn't want in the first place, and all that's going to do is result in prolonged and protracted and expensive litigation paid for by Call Valley. There's no reason for that to be even considered. They were just asking Call Valley to put in a new road, where a new road wasn't needed, and you're not dealing with a new road out there. This road has been in existence for a number of years, that's been maintained by the county by chip and sealing, and where necessary, doing some mill and overlay in those areas where the aggregate had gone below the required limits. So, we were quite disappointed when we had that meeting with the county, and we came back and we thought it was just arbitrary and capricious, and that Olson did not provide any support for its recommendation. And you can't ask a company to come into Leavenworth County and build a new road that everyone gets to use, including future development, future industrial and commercial users, and put their road in a much better condition, a brand-new condition that didn't exist as of the time the SUP was being considered.
Just a second. You said, in your opinion, Olson did not provide any support for its recommendations?
No, they didn't. We did not receive anything from Olson at that meeting-
We'll follow up with staff on that.
Right. We did not receive anything from Olson at that meeting as to what they were basing those requirements on. So, as we said, we have tests, and Mr. Fransen's going to testify as to what he did and how he went out there, and he wrote the report that says this roadway has a useful life of 10 years if the county continues to chip and seal. He also said, "Where necessary, if future repairs are needed, you're going to have to mill and overlay." So Mr. Olson, I'm sorry, Mitch sends an email to Call Valley saying, "What do you mean by substantial maintenance in the future?" And Mr. Fransen wrote his report back to the staff saying, "Mill and overlay where needed." At no time did he say the whole road had to be reconstructed. And there is nothing in front of this commission that says the entire route needs to be rebuilt. There may be segments that need to be mill and overlay, there may be segments that need additional work, but not the entire route. So, Jesse's going to talk about the report from Mr. Fransen, and we're going to allow him an opportunity to answer any questions you might have concerning his report, but I think that's critical. We also have a traffic study report that was done by CFS Engineering, Tom Ingram, and he came to the same conclusion on behalf of CFS, that there's no imminent danger to the public by the use of this roadway system for Call Valley and its trucks.
But that's within 10 years, and your SUP's 25 years.
Correct. But as I want to talk about, Call Valley came back with a proposal to the staff, to which we never received any response or counter-proposal, which we felt would deal with the problems of a 10-year use, maybe a 13 or 15-year before a mill and overlay needs to be undertaken, sir. And we never received any kind of response to our proposal, which put additional money into the hands of the county to take care of future maintenance and repair. We're going to discuss that here in a second.
So, on the county's request, Call Valley had a pavement exploration report prepared and conducted, and the purpose of this study and the purpose of the report was to analyze and determine the condition of the pavement on the route that will be used, the condition of the subsurface under the route that will be used, and whether, what impact the hauling or additional traffic will have on that route. Now, we've talked about this, but the engineering firm that was hired and that performed these studies is Call Valley Engineering. It's a completely independent, unrelated, third-party that has no relation whatsoever to the applicant, Call Valley Companies, Inc. They've never had any relation. And Jeff Fransen is the engineer, he's a materials engineer with the engineering company, and he's here today to talk with you and answer questions about the report that he prepared. But as we've talked about, it was important, the county and its outside engineer dictated where the boring tests would be performed. So in completing this study and completing this analysis, the engineering company went out, took samples, core samples of the pavement on the route that will be used, and analyzed those samples. And those samples were dictated by the county, where the county wanted the study to be performed. And the conclusion, after analyzing the pavement, analyzing the subsurface, and taking into consideration the additional traffic that will be running on that route, is that the route does not need to be removed and replaced. That's the bottom-line conclusion.
Is that within a timeframe?
That it does not need to be removed and replaced? Well, and Jeff will be able to provide you some more color and context on this, but it does not need to be replaced within 10 years, and as you'll hear-
Is that the timeframe you're working with, 10 years?
That, no. The timeframe, so with proper maintenance of that road, chip sealing, doing boring tests, and if it's determined that there are issues or quicker degradation on sections of the road that require a mill and overlay, performing a mill and overlay to keep that road up to standard, as long as there is the routine maintenance of that road, which will happen going forward, that road will last beyond 10 years.
So it will never need to be replaced?
I'm not saying, nobody was hired to determine whether it would ever need to be replaced.
I'm just trying to figure out what's your timeframe for saying that the removal/replacement is not needed? What, is that within X amount of years?
During, during, for the duration of the SUP, for 10 years-
For 25 years.
Maybe I can answer your question.
I don't think that's what we're saying, sir. I think what we're saying here is, on the basis of his report, he used a 10-year analysis. He's going to tell you, if the road is properly maintained going forward by the county, as it's its obligation to the county residents, it could go on beyond 10 years. In addition, as part of the proposal submitted by Call Valley that we're going to get into, Call Valley has agreed that it'll go out there every two years and do test borings at the same locations that Olson Engineering and Crystal's staff told us to do, to see if there's deterioration. And if there's deterioration, the question has to be, do you repair it by chip and seal? Do you mill and overlay, or do you have to take out a particular section of that road? And then where's the money going to come from to do that? And in our proposal that we're going to give you, there will be funds that'll take care of those particular events if they should occur.
I think saving engineering questions for the engineer probably is the right thing to do.
Right.
I said saving engineering questions for the engineer is probably the right thing to do. Additionally, if anybody thinks two, or three, or five engineering companies are going to come to the same conclusion, that would be like law firms agreeing, so let's maybe go to the next slide.
Every once in a while, law firms' lawyers do agree on things.
Well, it's just your PowerPoint set of what it says, I just wondered what timeframe you were looking at when you said that removal/replacement is not needed. I just wondered what your timeframe-
The timeframe is what's set forth in his report.
Okay. So-
So is Jeff around?
I can go, yeah, I can go check.
I'm going to continue because I don't want to keep you sitting there. Couple factors that we want to say, why we think this request is arbitrary and capricious. It's our understanding that there's five other quarries, rock quarries in Leavenworth County. To our knowledge, none of them pay a royalty or impact fee, which Call Valley is willing and has offered to pay. None were required to completely remove and replace any road prior to the issuance of the permit. None of those quarries were required to go out and condemn private property, incur that expensive protracted litigation over a number of years, and as I think we're going to conclude here, there's no justification for that requirement in this particular situation. If Jeff's here, and then I'll get back with our proposal to be considered by the commission.
I'm Jeff Fransen with Call Valley Engineering Company.
Okay. Well- I just wondered what's your timeframe on, in one of the PowerPoints that says conclusion, "Removal/replacement not needed." So, obviously, that's a pretty open-ended statement, so I'm wondering, for that road, when would you, when would your analysis be that it would need to be replaced?
When we worked with, or when Dan Hayes talked to us about developing the scope of our investigation, the investigation scope was set for 10 years, so that is the timeframe that we were looking at. And at that point, if nothing is done to the roadway as far as any kind of maintenance or substantial maintenance, then you'll probably need to do something with the roadway at that time.
So, and you're aware the SUP is a longer period of time?
Oh, yes. No, that's what I understood after this all came about.
Right. Thank you so much.
But that was with no maintenance or improvements versus scheduled maintenance and improvement?
Now, if the county is going to continue to do the chip and seal every three years, that will help extend the life, because that's what chip and seal does, it addresses oxidation and cracking at the surface, so that helps preserve the pavement from environmental forces. But the loads actually affect the base courses and the subgrade, and it's possible that through the course of the 10 years, there may be an area, since we were limited in the number of locations that we did look at, you might have a weak area that we didn't see. And so it's possible you might have a weak area in the pavement.
Did your analysis contemplate the additional truck, traffic that we were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And what number did you use for that?
I think we calculated it was something on the order of like 500,000 Easts, or about 250,000 trucks, something similar to that.
250,000 trucks in a total period?
Yeah, over the 10-year period.
And the county asphalt patches every year, chip seals every three years.
Yeah. And that's an excellent program, and it's-
Right.
In our study, looking at the results of the pavement quarries in that, the pavement is really in remarkably good condition compared to a lot of the pavements that I see in my work.
It's had a lot of asphalt put on it over the years when the Lowering Quarry used to operate, and it was a truck route then.
And it's remarkable, this is the first pavement section, asphalt pavement section, that I've seen in Kansas that has a portal cement treated base underneath it. I have not seen that anyplace else in my 40 years.
It was a KDOT project in the mid-'70s.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
When you, when you gave your report to the county, do you think Olson understood, when you said that it had a 10-year life expectancy, that was only if we didn't do any maintenance?
Well, I think I said, routine maintenance, which is, you know, the occasional chip seal or something like that, you know, by two minutes treatment to seal up any service cracks that are due to oxidation, but, you know, nothing major.
But your report did say it had a 10-year life expectancy.
That's what I anticipated.
And I think Olson, actually, their, their analysis was that it had about seven years, and we said seven or 10. That's not worth arguing over because it's good, but I think they understood that that meant with the maintenance. I don't think that there was any time where it said that this road would last in perpetuity as long as we did maintenance to it.
No.
Okay.
Well, I think it's hard to define, for us to understand what Olson was considering, or how they understood the report, no one here from Olson tells us how they understood it, but we do know, we do know that Olson sent an email to Mr. Fransen, Call Valley Engineering, that says, "What does substantial maintenance consist of, i.e. mill and overlay, chip and seal, or complete removal and replacement?" And the answer was, substantial maintenance would involve a mill and overlay of the roadway. So they obviously understood something there because-
No, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying they understood exactly this, and they still came to the conclusion that they came to. I just wanted, they had this information, you're not providing new information that they didn't have, and they still came to the recommendation and conclusion that the roadway, the best process is to have the roadway replaced. I just, that's all, that's not-
I'd like to ask Mr. Fransen some questions to follow up on what the commissioners have asked. Did you choose, Call Valley Engineer choose the locations of where these test borings would be done, or were they given to you by Olson Engineering and the staff?
We were provided the location through Dan Hayes, so I don't know who actually selected the locations we were supposed to sample and test, but they were not, we did not choose.
And was there anything that you saw, sir, when you were preparing your report that would indicate to you, based on the test borings that were done, that those segments of the roads had to be immediately removed and replaced with brand-new roads?
No. No, because the subgrades have very good CPR values, much better than what we normally encounter. You've got good aggregate base and portal cement treated base under there. The asphalt pavements are in extraordinarily good condition, so I didn't see any reason why you would need to remove and replace the entire pavement. Chip and seal, or maybe an overlay, would probably be the only thing that would be required in 10 years or beyond.
And so, did you find out that chip and seal had been done by the county in 2019?
Yes, somebody had told us that. I think your program is to do them about every three years or so.
Another chip and seal would not be necessary until 2022?
Yeah, something like that.
And when you have to do a mill and overlay, does that mean you have to go out and do the entire road in a mill and overlay, or only segments that are adversely affected would be mill and overlay?
You can do segments, some, you know, KDOT, the way KDOT sets up, I worked for KDOT for 26 years, and the way that they set up- for 26 years, and the way that they set up their mill and overlay program, they do segments of the road. They don't, you know, do a one-mile segment unless it's a short segment into a highway or, I mean, into a town or a hamlet. But usually, they'll select a length, a distance, maybe five miles, eight miles, something like that to do the mill and overlay on.
And was there anything you found, sir, in your report that if the county continues with its obligation to chip and seal and then to do mill and overlay where necessary, that the roadway would not last beyond 10 years?
No, that's, that's the principle of program maintenance, is that you want to look at the roadway, you want to look at the condition of the roadway on a periodic basis. Say every, every other year, KDOT looks at their entire system every other year. Really, they, they look at the entire system every two years, but a portion of the system is looked at one year and then the next half of the state is looked at the other year. So, you know, that's, that's what you would do. And then when that happens, then, and the condition of the roadway deteriorates to a certain point that you need to maintain it, then you provide that and bring the roadway back up to the standard that you want it to. And if you do that before allowing it to deteriorate to the point where you really have to do a major repair, you can preserve that pavement for a very, very long time.
My earlier comment was on the Loring Road portion, the 32W route was the one I was referring to as far as the base and that on, not on the 158 Street or County Road 2 portion.
And that's what we noticed was, you know, the charts they went down, where the sand, where the sand plant's going to be, that's aggregate service and then you have simply an aggregate base under the asphalt pavement on 158.
Right, right. Okay, I just want to clarify that it was on the Loring part.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they considered this, the engineer from Cook Flat and Crowell mentioned a discussion was had about shoulders on the roads. What kind of analysis did you look at as far as the need for shoulders? Did you see that with the additional 100 trucks a day, that shoulders would be an improvement in safety on the road? Or did you issue an opinion at all on that?
No, we didn't. We were not directed to look at that. We were directed merely to look at the structure of the roadway, look at the condition of the subgrade, the base, and the asphalt.
Okay. And, but I do believe that that other engineer did make a comment that shoulder improvement would be something that would improve the road.
And that, yeah, and that could be. But we did not look at site distance or any of the other issues.
If that's it from Mr. Fransen, we'll continue with our presentation.
Okay. And you will be around for later, correct?
I can be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, we may have more questions later.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we were talking about the January 1st, 2020, meeting with the staff, where they hit us with this proposal for a new road. Call Valley came back with its own proposal that it made to the staff and to Olson Engineering, which would generate income for the repair and maintenance of this road system going forward and for future years. And I think it has to be kept in mind by this board. Call Valley is not going to be the only company using this road system. It is hoped that there'll be future industrial, commercial users and developers in that area who will also be required to pay an impact fee to contribute to future maintenance and repairs of the road. And if that comes to fruition, that certain segments have to be entirely replaced, there will be money from these additional impact fees required of any new developers that will pay for this cost. It shouldn't be Call Valley's sole responsibility and financial burden. So what we offered during the course of this S U P was to pay a guaranteed annual fee of $50,000 a year to the county. It can be used any way that the county wants to use that money. They want to use it for educational purposes, library, whatever they want to do, that money is theirs to use over the 25-year term, starting immediately. So we can do math, and that comes to about $2.5 million over 25 years. I might be off, but it's in that vicinity. And then we offered to pay a royalty of 15 cents per ton for any sand taken out of the property. We're anticipating 500,000 tons a year, which would generate an additional $75,000 of revenue. That would not start until the second or third year because the plant's not going to be operational. But in the first five years, it's going to be 250,000 guaranteed money and then it's 225,000 in years three through five. And there'll be some porks as, as we get down the road here. But that money would go into an escrow account, chosen by Leavenworth County. And if that funds, those funds were needed to do some maintenance or repair over and above the county's obligation to chip and seal, the county could draw down on that money to pay for those costs. Now, remember, the county has this $50,000 a year that it's receiving. If it wants to use that 50,000 towards chip and seal, that's fine because they'll finance it. So we also agreed in our proposal that we'd invest about 135,000 to improve the road routes, to do the widening of the intersections, the side improvements, and to reimburse the county for signage. Another important component of our proposal was, how do we know this road is continuing to be safer but needs additional repairs or maintenance? We agreed in our proposal that every two years, we would hire an independent company to go out and do test pourings to see if the road is holding up. And if not, we would pay the cost, you know, in addition to paying the cost for those test pourings, we would pay the cost of repairs from this money that we had set aside. We know that from where Call Valley Engineering has conducted these test pourings, we have a base now. We know what's going to happen, two years from now, we can go back and see how much deterioration has occurred. And I think Mr. Fransen told you that if the county continues to chip and seal like it's obligated to do, then you're not going to see this immediate deterioration of the road because the subsurface is in such good condition. We also said that we would keep one lane of traffic open at all times that any repairs or maintenance were being performed so that the residents can have easy access in and out of the property as well as we would have access in and out of the plant. Under the county's proposal of building a new road, that may seriously act to the detriment of the residents getting access to their residences and to their properties. And finally, we made two other conclusions and recommendations. One is any unused funds at the end of the 25 years goes to the county. So if they don't use any of these funds, we're going to show you there's going to be a substantial sum of money that the county gets submitted of. And we also said we would ask the county to place an impact fee on any future users and developers in that area so that they are, they too are contributing to the maintenance repair of these, of this roadway. And we made that proposal in writing to the county. We'd never received any counterproposal or any other response but build a new road. So let's just go through some real quick charts here. After five years of paying $50,000 a year and royalties in years three through five, there's going to be $475,000 for the county to use for maintenance repair of these roads. And then we got the 10 years because as the commissioner has said, well, it's a 10-year life, what's going to happen after 10 years? There's a million one, and you can see it goes up to $3 million over 25 years. A substantial sum of money that's never used, that money goes to the county. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that in addition to paying these impact fees, there's going to be additional taxes, as we're going to show you in the chart, that's paid by Call Valley because of use of this property's gone from agricultural to commercial. They're going to be paying taxes on the capital improvements. They're going to be buying $3 million worth of capital improvement equipment that's going to be used to operate this plant that's going to generate sufficient taxes and revenues for the county.
Question. You said the staff never provided a counterproposal. Did you not receive this, this document from Olson that has, this looks to me like their proposal that they're giving you?
I don't know if it's a document.
But it's the Olson and Leavenworth County staff recommendations. Did you never receive that?
Sir, you showed me a document and I had to.
I don't know. Did you never get any recommendations from the staff?
Not that I recall, sir, no. We never.
You never, did, it was in the packet that we sent out, I know, two weeks ago.
There's a difference, sir, getting it in the packet two weeks ago after the dies and cast as opposed to when we went to them in January of 2020 and we gave our proposal and we asked for a response, we asked to negotiate the terms and conditions of our offer.
Okay. Well, I will take this up with staff, but it looks to me like they, there's a, there's a response.
So let's talk about the economic benefits. We have a chart here. This chart right here, I mean, we can go over that. I don't think there's any dispute that the staff has asked for improvements to the roadways in and out of the plant and for signage, it's going to cost about 135,000. I don't think there's any dispute of that. If you want us to go into it, we can do that if, unless there's some questions, I'd rather go on.
I do have a couple of questions. On the railroad, with Union Pacific Railroad?
Can you?
Just a second, Commissioner Cos. The railroad crossing there, as far as the upgrades on it, had, your communications with Union Pacific Railroad been, they're okay with the change in traffic patterns at that crossing?
We have not received anything. To best my knowledge, from Union Pacific stating they oppose this project. Now, Dan, have you received anything?
No, they've opposed it. They said it was good to go.
Okay. So I wondered, did you have any communication with them? Had you?
Not directly, sir, because we, this has been out there to the public for two years, the use of, and they've had plenty of opportunities, just like the residents, to come forward and cite any complaint or concern they have about this project, and they haven't done that to our attention.
Okay.
So if you look at the summary of the economic benefit, you can see that what we've talked about, the year, over the terms of this yearly fees are going to come to $1,250,000 over the term of this project, $1,725,000 in royalties that are going to be paid. And then we have the various taxes that are going to go, the capital improvements, on the property tax and on the investment in, to Leavenworth Library, all this. And then we have our original 135,000 upfront. Now, it's important to note, Call Valley's not coming and asking for any taxing center or financing from the county. They're going to finance this all themselves. And by implementing this project, it's going to utilize the highest investment use of that property, which has been zoned, is heavy industrial since 1962. And I think the most important thing for you to consider is it gives income and revenue to this county that's not going to get from any other source for several years due to this pandemic. There's not going to be any quick fix to this or for any other county to come up with money and revenue to pay for the costs and expenses that this county has, other than from the development of this particular area. And so in the first five years, the county's going to receive between the capital improvement tax and the money that we proposed, under our proposal, $614,170. And you can see the numbers there. But let's, let's go to what the real importance is and you go to, the county, at the cost of Call Valley, hired Wilson Engineering to go out there and do some analysis of the road. They come up with some cost of chip and sealing and mill and overlay over a number of years. And you can see, go back then, after 20, 25 years, Call Valley will pay close to $5.3 million in taxes and revenues to this county. And we also, after, after just five years, it's paid over $1 million in taxes and revenue that are going to come in here. I think the real important slide that we're going to show you is Wilson Engineering came in, came up with the cost of chip and sealing and mill and overlay for the next 10 years and for 20 years and for the life of this project. And in the Wilson and company report, it states, Wilson was selected by Leavenworth County to review several development proposal documents submitted by Call Valley Companies. And this is dated August 16, 2019. Wilson was hired by the county, but paid for by Call Valley. And so Wilson came out and they said in the next slide, well, this is what the cost is of chip and sealing the entire route over the next 10 years. And, and remember, Wilson was looking at a 4.2-mile route, and that route has now been reduced to 3.3 miles. So it's about 20%. So the numbers we're going to use is simple 20%. So Wilson projects over the next 10 years, the cost of chip and sealing this route to be $460,000. Once again, I'm just rounding up. And if you reduce that by 20% because the route's no longer 4.2, that comes down to $367,740 of actual cost to the county to chip and seal. Now, over that same 10-year period, remember, Call Valley's paying a guaranteed annual fee of 50,000, so that generates $500,000. Simple math is subtracting the 500,000 to $370,000 for the chip and seal costs to the county, and that leaves an excess of around $132,000 for the county. These aren't our numbers. These numbers come from the company selected by Olson and staff here. So let's go back to the, so you can see this chart, this shows you that the chip and seal costs incurred by the county over the next 10 years are going to be less than the revenues paid by Call Valley solely on the guaranteed yearly fee. Then the next question is mill and overlay. Well, once again, these, these figures from Wilson anticipate that the entire 4.2-mile route has to be mill and overlay. There's no evidence before this tribunal or presented by anyone that when a mill and overlay project has to be done, it's for the entire 4.2 miles as opposed to, let's say, 1.5 miles. But let's just use their numbers. Assuming the county doesn't use the $50,000 a year, after 10 years, the cost projected by Wilson of mill and overlaying is rounded up to $1 million. 20% of that takes it down to 800,000 mill and overlay the entire 3.3-mile route over the next 10 years. During the same time period, Call Valley has paid in $1.1 million to the county to cover those costs. So our impact fees that are paying will cover the cost of mill and overlaying this project over for a 10-year period. And if we projected over a 20-year period, the same conclusion comes up, simple math, that the amount of money that we're paying into these accounts, into the county, exceed the cost of chip and sealing for 20 years and exceed the cost of mill and overlaying the entire route over the course of 20 years. And just go up to the next slides, please, Justin. You can see that the cost comparison numbers from Wilson says $1.8 million to mill and overlay this twice over the next 20 years, the entire route. Call Valley's paying in $2.3 million, so whatever the difference there is, about $500,000 still in benefits. Once again, we're not including any other taxes and sources of revenue that are being generated by this project. So there's more than sufficient funds to cover the cost that Wilson Engineering came up with for both chip and sealing and for mill and overlaying. And I want to remind everybody here that the cost is generally, it's the county's obligation, it's their cost to chip and seal. The best chip and seal is two years down the road. And I don't think, as Mr. Fransen said, and I think as everyone here understands, that if a certain segment of the road needs an additional aggregate applied or mill and overlay, it doesn't mean the entire 4.2-mile route needs to be mill and overlay. But if you want to use these numbers, there's sufficient funds to pay for those costs. You know, I'm going to, I think if there's any other questions, we can answer those. I mean, we've given this presentation, we've given you, look, with.
My question would be, you presented this to us this evening. We've, we got this. But has this been, and this is also for staff, this document and these proposals and these figures and these, everything we got tonight, have, have these things been evaluated by Olson? Do we, do we have any way to know that this is accurate or, could you address that?
Is now the appropriate time?
I, I mean.
Can I address it? Can I address it?
I'm just asking the board. I think the question was asked of me, Mr. Joel.
Okay.
So I'm just asking, is now the appropriate time?
No, let's move on. We can ask these questions once we get the presentation done.
Well, I'm going to take time to, for my presentation to answer that. If Olson hasn't reviewed and analyzed this, it's not Call Valley's responsibility. They've had these documents, they've had the numbers from Wilson Engineering since August of 2019. They've had the proposal from Call Valley as to our impact fee since January of 2020. We sent that in writing to the county and to Olson. So if they didn't take the time to fact-check, it's simple math, you know.
Well, I just got it tonight. I just received it. I just received it before we walked in the door.
This document was brought in tonight around 4 o'clock, 4:30, I believe.
I didn't have time to look at it at all.
I understand you not having time to do it. It's different than whether your staff and its engineer had time.
Did you bring this in tonight or did you give it to us before tonight?
Well, I gave you that notebook.
Tonight, correct?
But the underlying facts from that, the underlying facts from that were in your possession since January of 2020, whether you chose to ignore it and not pay attention.
Whether you chose to ignore it or not. So you've stood up here all night, so far about an hour, a little over, and you continually repeat certain things. And I know they're words and terms that you're trying to get in front of everybody so you can put it in their heads, but it doesn't make it fact, just makes it a statement. Olson reviewed this information. We had it. We gave you what our recommendation was going to be. You were aware of it. We sat in this very room and had that conversation. We talked about options on what, how you might finance something like that if we did go forward with a complete replacement. You asked me for some contact information. I provided it. Never heard back anything from there. The counterproposal, you have a response to that. The response was, our recommendation is we need full removal and replacement. I think we told you at that time, this is where we're at. This is where our professional firm, third party with no interest, other than just providing us a service. That's the conclusion that they came to.
I'm not arguing about the conclusion. It came to, I'm arguing, sir, is that you cited the golden factors that have to be considered by not only this commission, but also by the courts of Kansas that have to be considered. And if this commission's acting or the staff is acting in arbitrary and capricious manner.
And can you define those terms for me? What is arbitrary?
Without basis, without a factual basis.
So the fact that Olson reviewed this thoroughly over the course of a year, he came up with a proposal, that that's without basis?
No, I think what you put this hard and started on discussion started off with, sir, is you're saying you didn't have time to review our conclusions that we drew from the numbers.
No, I said we had provided this document. We already drew, we drew conclusions and we provided you with that.
Right. You could have drawn the same conclusions and not been surprised by what those numbers were today.
I'm not surprised by those numbers. I didn't say I was.
We disagree on the Olson report.
We disagree on the final result. That's all. That's all I'm saying. We disagree on the result. Our engineer says that it needs to be, this is the best way to protect the county's interest. Your engineer says it's not needed.
And I'm here to say on behalf of Call Valley Engineering, there's no record here that presents in this commission that requiring a brand-new road to be built without any finite amount of money to be spent, protracted litigation for two years, it's not arbitrary, it's just decided. If this is the manner in which the county wants to defeat this project, that's fine. That's for someone smarter than us to decide. But it certainly doesn't fit with what the county has done in prior situations with these other quarries or with any other projects here, is requiring people to build a brand-new road. So that's going to be the standard. Any other company that's going to come in here and develop that area, the county's going to be hard pressed not to say to them going forward.
Thank you for letting me know what my job is. I appreciate that.
I'm not telling you what your job is. I'm telling you what my job is here on behalf of Call Valley.
But back to the beginning, is we received this document 10 minutes before we came in to have this meeting, or a half hour. And we, you knew we were going to have this meeting. Why couldn't we have received this two weeks ago?
Well, we were putting it together. And also, I think that a part of the thing is the county has an obligation to, to present you with evidence as to all the facts, whether they, if they didn't give you our proposal, that's not my responsibility. It's neglect on their part of their duties. But I want to get back to my point, sir. I think it's important because the standards being set here tonight, if the conclusion from the county administrator and the staff is that any development down that area is going to have to build a brand-new road for the 4.2 mile route, that sets a standard. That's what you're telling anybody who wants to develop that. Because if not, someone's going to come back and say, wait, you made me do that. Why isn't the next developer going to be responsible for building an entire new road before they're entitled to?
That's why we hire Olson, though. I mean, we've depended on them for a lot of things. That's, you know, we, we're depending on them.
Right. And I've presented you with facts that show that the cost that the county's own engineer went out to, that the money that Call Valley is willing to pay will more than satisfy the cost of chip and sealing for the next 20 years and the cost of mill and overlay.
And I don't want to be disrespectful to you, sir, but you gave us this information 30 minutes before the meeting, and we couldn't give this to anybody to look at and review whether this is even accurate.
And that's why we're not going to vote on this tonight. So let's just move on, sir.
But then I want to make sure that's clear. I might have given you this information. The county's had this information since January of 2020. What they deal with it, I can't tell you.
I never had this proposal looked at.
You're going back to this proposal. I will agree that you have not had that proposal in written form until tonight. What I'm telling you is it's indisputable, and we can produce document after document that the county had that information. Your staff had that information back in January of 2020, whether they, and they had the Wilson report back in August of 2019. If someone didn't put together the same charts we did, that's not our fault, sir.
I think it's fair to say at this point, there's a bit of an impasse.
I think so, too.
It's not uncommon for engineering firms to come up with different conclusions. That's also, you know, we can find lots of examples of that, same as I mentioned in law firms earlier, and I didn't mean to be critical. That's everyone's job, so.
And I'm going to end on this because I know the residents, I want to reserve some time. While the Olson report made the suggestion that you do the entire route, redo and rebuild the entire route at unlimited cost to Call Valley, there's nothing in the report that shows the entire route needs to be rebuilt at this time before the project commences. That's in the Olson report. Thank you.
Okay. So is this complete your presentation?
Yes, I think I reserved up to 20 minutes maybe to.
All right, that's fine.
Maybe later.
Then I will call upon the people to speak in favor of this application.
Could we, could we have a five-minute break?
Okay.
If that's okay.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess or break here before we go to people speaking in favor.
Commissioner, we actually have, on the list that you have, that's actually those who are in person, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's opposition first.
Okay, opposition.
So are you going to start with the opposition?
Yeah.
If you have this, if you want any in favor, just make sure you move to the bottom. We'll call them.
Okay. You want to start with opposition then? Okay. All right. Well, I have actually a couple of these. I have two.
Yeah.
I was going by that. We'll go with opposition. So we could be a little while, maybe go take a break. Okay. Well, yeah, but I had to. I got them. All right, we'll go with that.
Everyone, whichever way you want to go. Just let us know.
All right. Well, I figured in favor, could get that knocked out pretty quick.
I think the thing is that the.
The original deal at Mariner that they signed.
That's what the feedback actually is.
Uh huh, right.
So about many better people are outside. So it's called an.
Okay, all right. All right, that's fine. That's fine with the people.
You're just getting me started. I was warning you. I was just going to sit here and be quiet.
I don't expect you to be quiet when I was doing my presentation, but I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I got two of them.
You know, I've never been one of those. My wife should be wound up for half a week. Me, I could drink a cup and go to sleep.
Oh boy, that's some mild dog food.
Yeah, dug it out of that other car. You can tell it's old, they're paying two cents a ton. It's pretty old.
Yeah. Well, that's an old bowler, son.
You should have ordered me pizza. Sorry.
Oh, you're just getting hard.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Chad, as Franson, our engineer, has a condition that he can't drive after dark. So are we going to use, do you need him for any more?
I don't think so.
No, maybe not.
Let him go.
Before it gets dark. Thank you very much.
So if we have questions, we'll put them in writing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And thank him for coming up.
Absolutely.
I didn't either. Just whenever everybody gets back in here. All right, we're good. Okay, we got everybody? All right, we'll let the public hearing resume, and we'll do a change. We'll go ahead and let opposition speak. We have folks waiting outside to do that. So I guess we will ask Andrea Boo, attorney for the Timbergs. You have 15 minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a timer or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my clients, Mark and Tracy Timberg. My name is Andrea Boo. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lewis Rice LLC, 1010 Walnut Suite 500, Kansas City, Missouri. I certainly recognize the difficult position that you all are in. I too sat, have sat in your seat earlier today, just a few hours ago. I hope that I can make your decision a little bit easier tonight, because when you weigh the factors, I think that you will find that there is only one decision. And I want to give you the facts and let you make, come up with your own conclusions. As you know, under Section 1, Article 22 of the Zoning and Subdivision Regulations of Leavenworth County, certain uses of property may only be permitted after approval of a special use permit. These certain uses requiring a special use permit may be otherwise desirable, but due to their nature, may be incompatible with the surrounding area. When the golden factors outlined in Section 6 of Article 22 are considered, we think the Board of County Commissioners will find that the use of the property at this particular location as a sand quarry is incompatible with the surrounding area, and the special use permit must be denied. There was some discussion about the golden factors earlier, but we think, or I think, that the conclusions were given, and I'm going to give you the facts. The first factor is the character of the neighborhood. In Taco Bell versus City of Mission, the Kansas Supreme Court noted that the character of the neighborhood is defined by the references to nearby uses. This property is surrounded by rural, residential, and agricultural uses. To the extreme northeast, there are several lots ranging from less than a half an acre to over six and a half acres and used as either single-family residences or farming operations. And yes, there are single-family residences near this property. The property to the north of the railroad tracks, which is zoned residential, RR-2.5, consists of varying lot sizes from three and four acres to as large as 300 and 400 acres, all located within a mile of the property. The property to the south of the railroad tracks, again, within a mile of the property, is zoned industrial, but is all used, according to the appraiser's website, is either agricultural use, farming, home site, or farming use. And if you drive this area, as I'm sure you all have, it is clear that the use is rural, residential, and agricultural. Even the burning tree off course to the south is an area that adds to the peace and tranquility. There is no question that approving this special use permit will change the character of this area. So I agree with the counsel for Call Valley, that the decision that you make today will impact this area for years to come. Further, the disruption of 208.6 acres of the 224-acre site leaving a 146-acre lake that will eventually not benefit the public to be fed by groundwater raises further concerns on the impact to those nearby properties that are currently on well water. While this property is zoned industrial, the use and the character of the surrounding properties and this property is not. Approval of the special use permit will increase the intensity and change the use of the property. My clients and 692 other residents of Leavenworth County who have signed a petition opposing the special use permit feel that the approval will have a detrimental impact on the character and this, and that this type of use is not suitable for this location. Incompatibility with the surrounding area is the reason that you are being asked to consider the special use permit and is grounds for denial. Changing the character and the use of this property with the added safety concerns and little economic benefit is further grounds for denial. Secondly, zoning and use of the nearby property. Again, this question asks not only the zoning of the nearby property, but the uses. And while the zoning is industrial, we are unaware of any industrial uses in the nearby property, and the only industrial uses are much further to the east, east in the bluffs. As I just described, all uses of nearby property are agriculture and or rural residential. You are not being asked to consider a special use permit for a quarry in an industrial use area. You are in essence considering both a change in land use that will increase the intensity and the use of the area. The third is the suitability of the property for the uses to which it has been restricted, which you would ask about earlier. The staff report focused on the suitability of the property for the proposed use. What this factor actually concerns is whether the property is suitable for the uses as restricted. In other words, is it suitable for uses other than for a sand quarry? And this again is in the Taco Bell versus City of Mission case. There was simply no evidence presented by Call Valley to suggest that it would not be suitable to continue in its current use or a different use, including an industrial use, other than a sand quarry. The fourth factor, extent to which removal of restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Traffic safety is a significant concern of the residents, the planning commission, and the Leavenworth County Sheriff in his letter dated March 27, 2020, in a letter to the commissioners. And we're not talking about just a few more cars on the road. We are talking about eight to 10 large dump trucks per hour traveling rural routes. And I will give, I will take a little bit of weight off of your shoulders. We don't even have to get to the reconstruction of the road. While that is desirable to reconstruct the road, that alone does not address the safety First, and not without significance, in order to allow trucks on the route, the board will need to amend Leavenworth County Resolution 2009-50, which currently prohibits commercial truck traffic along the designated route. Until now, when Call Valley needs to use this route to operate its sand quarry, the board has felt that commercial truck traffic is not appropriate. Reconstructing the road alone, or mill and overlay, or chip and seal, will not alone fix the safety concerns. Of similar and equal concern is the width of the roadway and the lack of the shoulders. This traffic study makes some recommendations about width at some turns, but this does not solve the issue of lack of width and shoulders. but this does not solve the issue of lack of width and shoulders throughout the majority of the route. There was testimony, as mentioned earlier, at the planning commission of Tom Ingram, an engineer with Cook Flat and Strobel, who prepared the traffic study testifying that Ashtoe Standards recommends a minimum of six-foot grated shoulders on Loring Road. It, however, is striped with 11-foot lanes and two-foot shoulders. So the reconstruction of the road will only address one issue, not the major safety issues. Also, there was testimony at the planning commission of runners, bicyclists, and mail trucks and school buses that use this roadway, many of which do so during the permitted times that trucks will be on the road. There are other concerns, noise. In the written, in the written report provided by Call Valley, the written narrative, they provided decibel levels that are desirable for an industrial zone during daylight hours. This area, as I previously noted, is not an industrial zone. This is a rural, residential, and agricultural area. While farm equipment operates at certain times, it certainly does not operate year-round from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. I do not have time to go into each of the impacts on the neighborhood properties and I suspect you will hear testimony later on about other concerns of the neighbors. However, in your packet, there is a list of pros and cons that was prepared by a group of concerned citizens. It is found on pages 784 and 785. I encourage you to review that list. Other concerns are water levels and contaminations, as I mentioned earlier. The Lenape Drainage District has not yet approved this project and has requested additional information. The city of DeSoto also raised concerns about water levels and contamination. The Burning Tree Golf Course has raised concerns about the impact on the tranquility of its patrons. And I could go on. And I should add, I have actually worked with route roads and just because they have not responded does not mean they have acquiesced to a project. Number five, the length of time the property has been vacant as zoned. This property is not vacant. It is, as noted in the staff report, it has been used for agricultural purpose for at least the past two decades. The county's draft update of the comprehensive plan recognizes that preservation of farmland is an enhancement to the county's economy and continuation of its royal, rural character. Excuse me, I'm trying to get allotted in in 15 minutes. Number six, relative gain to the economic development, public health, safety, and welfare. Until tonight, Call Valley has presented little, if not no, economic benefit to the county if the sand quarry were constructed. And I would add that the information presented tonight is still little economic benefit. In the written narrative dated June 28, 2019, to which Call Valley's operations are limited, the employees on site will be limited to three for a 220-acre site. The relative gain to economic development is minimal at best. Production of sand is also provided as a benefit, but Leavenworth County is unlikely to see any tax revenue from the production of sand or the sale of sand since the sand will be taken to Call Valley's plant in Edwardsville in Wyandotte County. Again, the economic benefits to the county and its residents simply do not warrant the significant detrimental change in use and character that will result from approval of this special use permit. And we have not seen the information that was provided tonight to even be able to evaluate the economic benefit. And the planning commission, counsel for Call Valley, can only speculate that the increase in property taxes would result in an additional approximately $25,000 in taxes. Very minimal. Number seven, the conformance to the comprehensive plan. The draft of the Leavenworth County Comprehensive Plan includes six targets for managing growth. Target two states support new commercial, industrial, residential, and mixed-use growth that balances the desire for economic development and a heightened tax base with Leavenworth County's predominantly small town feel and rural heritage. Target six states preserve the most productive farmland as a source for viable agriculture activities that will embrace the county's economy and continue its royal, rural character. Approval of this special use permit would be contrary to the targets for managing growth in the draft comprehensive plan since the disruption of farmland will not lead to a heightened tax base. Number eight, staff recommendations. While the staff recommended approval, this should not be the determinant de facto. Planning commission reviewed additional information presented at the hearing and recommended denial. Staff's recommendation and analysis of the golden factors, in my opinion, reply too heavily on the zoning of the property and not the current use. There is little evidence of economic benefit to the county. The conditions also do not mitigate the safety concerns. Again, while the reconstruction of the road is desirable, it does not address the lack of shoulder and the width of the road. In conclusion, and I might add that Ms. Boss noted that the deficiencies in the traffic study after the planning commission, which is why the recommendations were made to reconstruct the road. Finally, this area was zoned industrial almost 60 years ago. Yet none of the surrounding property has been developed for industrial use. We should not expect that all of a sudden this property is going to be developed for industrial use. The zoning, which is only one minor part of the golden factors, is the only factor that weighs in Call Valley's favor. The overwhelming evidence, character, use, impact on the nearby properties, relative economic gains, safety, public health, weighs in favor of denial in this application. Again, I would urge you to review the list of pros and cons. The safety concerns outlined in the sheriff of Leavenworth County's letter, again, on page 784, 785, and the sheriff's letter is on page 17. I actually have copies of that if you would like to review that and not wade through 1,100 pages of documents. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if I got through my 15 minutes. One minute. Again, I timed it and I thought I would have a minute left. But again, I would urge you to deny this because if you weigh the golden factors, I think you will find that this application should be denied.
Thank you.
Mark, just a quick point of clarification. I didn't want to interrupt and thank you very much. There's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the SUP process and obviously the due diligence that our staff has been required to conduct. But, you know, the SUP process is something we put on businesses. It's not specific to, just to be clear, this type of use or uses like it. It's so that the county or municipality can actually understand what the impacts are, both those positive and negative. And I just wanted to clarify that that is a process that businesses endure so that we can do that study and it's not specific to this type of use, correct?
That's correct. Certain uses require a special use permit, which allows us to do this kind of analysis. Other uses do not require that because of the minimal impact. Household or home-based businesses, those types of things, they don't require that. But an industry like this that has such an impact would be required. It would be required of anyone like the development like this or anybody who was creating a significant amount of traffic.
And just to clarify again, I think there's been some confusion by all parties at certain times that the SUP process is not specific to the type of use, meaning sand mining. It is specific to the traffic and all of the other things that encompass this type of business. So it's not going against or being specific to the zoning. It's the process any business would go through that qualifies for these additional, again, procedures and due diligence. So I just wanted to put that out there because I think there's been some confusion.
We have Ross Fordings in our county that have been through this.
And Commissioner Smith, if I might, I might save some time for the next comments. I feel it may be important to explain the commercial truck traffic signs, 19-something-50. If you read that all the way through, it does not apply to this situation. A no commercial truck traffic sign means a county route has been identified as probably a through-traffic route. So we don't want what the ordinance says. We don't want out-of-county business to truck a product through that route to another out-of-county location. That's what a no-through commercial truck traffic sign is for. It doesn't apply if the product is made on that route and is shipping it out, or if the product is being shipped to a location on that route. That sign does not apply. So I think that's confusing to a lot of people. So no commercial truck traffic sign doesn't mean that you can't use that route for trucks as long as the business is on that route. That might save some confusion.
And there's probably never been a ticket issued since that resolution has been.
Probably not. I think, I think the sign should come down, but.
Anyway, we'll move on to Robert Ossleger.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Robert Ossleger and I live at 16819 Lenape Road. I am approximately one-quarter of a mile west of where this proposed site is. And I, that is where I live at. I'm the only house there. That is my only way in and out to go to Bonner Springs, to go to Minwood. If I go to DeSoto, of course, I would come down to the traffic sign and go south to DeSoto. So that is my only route in and out of the said property. And my concern there is safety for purposes of the fact of being, if there's any type of medical emergency or anything of that nature, that would be the only route that they have to come to. We've had a couple of instances down there where Leavenworth County Sheriff and Johnson County deputies and stuff had to use that road in Lenape to get to it. Here approximately, probably somewhere around five years ago, there was a major accident right there on 166th Street between Lenape Road and railroad tracks where there was a traffic accident. And both Leavenworth County and Johnson County Sheriff's Departments closed that road for over four hours while they attempted to investigate the said accident. The gentleman did not make it. He died in the accident. That would be a concern to me. Any emergency vehicles that would come down there, would they be able to get in and out? My, and me saying that I only have that one access, here probably 12, 13 years ago, the railroad at the other end of 170th and County Road 3, right there, they removed a wooden bridge so that they would not have to basically replace that bridge and stuff. So that would have been my other way that I could have went out. And there was actually, and traffic would come down that way if a train was stopped across there, which there was one actually on July 4th. There for about 20 minutes, a train over County Road 2 was stopped there and traffic backed all the way up past Lenape Road on my side of the road. And if they would have had to go any other direction, they would have had to turn to the right, going, coming out of DeSoto to go to Bonner Springs or to Minwood, and they would have to drive right down the middle of where this proposed.
Your time's up.
Plant will be made.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for Mr. Todd Donaldson.
That's my alarm in the morning, by the way. I'll pull this out here for a minute, therefore make sure I understand. You know, I was reading this report here that Call Valley engineer did. And I think I'm just a little confused on the, although the way I understand it, 80 tandems on this road was used for basis of this, of the testing and how long the road's going to live and everything. But if you do the simple math here, you know, if you got 160 acres, I know the property's 220 acres. And the way I understand it, if you want to go ahead and use the square footage per acre, gives you 6,900 square feet. You want to take that times 50, I guess the pit's going to be 50 foot deep. That's going to come out to 19,360,000 tons of sand that's going to have to be removed. And this is just 160 acres. Granted, I didn't do a two-to-one slope or anything, but I got plenty of room to spare. So if you take that, you're going to be looking at about 3,000 tons a day for the next 25 years coming out, which is going to be 2,978 tons per day, which is going to turn out to be about 119 trucks, loaded trucks, at 25 tons. At 25 tons. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if this is the simple math, you're looking at, you know, 24 hours, 24 trucks an hour because you got to take, you got to take in consideration the empty truck that's coming back. So that's, that's a lot of trucks that's going to be on the road. So I don't know where 80, you know, the 80 tandems, the way I understand it, there's only going to be, somebody said 8 million tons coming out. But when you do the, I just sitting there just trying to do the simple math there to figure it out, but I come up with about 19 million tons. And I just don't know if Call Valley, do they give us any kind of a cut sheet or quantities to verify their 8,500, or 8,500,000 tons? I don't know. It was just, you guys might want to think about that. Because if I was the hiring engineering firm to help me out, I would give them the least amount because this engineering firm is, basically, they don't have to worry about nothing because they are quoted, they're just going off the information that the client gave them. So there's no, you guys are not responsible for anything now. So time, those guys get going in three or four years. With that many trucks on the road, you guys are already committed with the permits and the road's going to tear up. And one last thing.
Tom, your time's up. Your three minutes up. Ready for Andrea Harrington Summers?
Hi, my name is Andrea Harrington Summers. I live at 15251 Loring Road, right on Howell Route. The thought of having several hundred trucks a day on our road is a sad situation. In 2007, a resolution was passed by the Board of County Commissioners that excludes commercial trucks on our road. What has changed? Nothing. The roads have not changed. The bridges have not changed. They are merely old chip-and-seal roads with no shoulders. These roads cannot handle 40-ton trucks and school buses on these tight and curvy old roads. We are not against business. We are not, we, but we are against business that devalue public safety, property values, and are delinquent with their citations. I believe the impact would be worse than the benefit. Everyone knows what OSHA is. Well, there is also an IMSA, Mine Safety and Health Administration. I looked into Call Valley Sand and Gravel Incorporated and I was appalled to see that IMSA has given them 485 citations and most of them are delinquent, meaning they have not paid their fine. Furthermore, IMSA added another four more citations June 30 of 2020. Wow. These citations are scary. I have a little pamphlet here. I have several citations. And I can give you one if you guys want to read.
Leave it on the table, please.
Okay, these citations are scary. Here are a few. 564104 spillage and leakage flammable and combustible liquids spillage. Then there's 56410442 combustible waste materials, including liquids, shall not accumulate in quantities that could create a fire hazard. in quantities that could create a fire hazard. Another citation was 565001 exposure limits for airborne contaminants. These were merely a few of their many citations. I just don't feel like this company is a good fit for our community. Listen, I've played this game before. In 2002, we were all here with the exact same special use permit that was right across the street from the one today. The permit was denied. Why? Because of all the reasons and concerns we are telling you here tonight. The only difference is the landowner was on our side and now she is opposing us. I'm from a good Christian family, and it's in God's favor to honor thy neighbor, but sadly, they are not following that rule. Please listen to our concern. Listen to the people. Listen to everyone who has worked so hard fighting for this every year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be Paula Geschina, and she has six minutes. Her husband donated his time to her also.
Commissioner, did you see, did Todd Donaldson, did we?
What's that?
Number three on the list, was that him? Okay, all right, I forgot to cross it out.
I'm assuming everyone has it, but I would like to make sure that anybody who had additional points or any documents that haven't already been submitted, to make sure they email it to the, the OCC distribution list.
Okay. State your name.
My name's Alan Geschini, observing my time, Paula Geschini.
Okay. Thank you. You need that, sir?
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
My name is Paula Geschini, 13162158th Street. I attended last week's county commissioners meeting, and I presented information showing that Call Valley Companies, Call Valley Sand and Gravel, has a long history of delinquent and non-payment of real estate taxes for their properties in Wyandotte County, where they are headquartered. The information I presented and left in hard copy with this group shows that Call Valley had been consistently and without fail, delinquent on paying their real estate taxes at least back to 2015. The amount of unpaid taxes and penalties or interest I reported last week was as of June 18th, 2020. That total owed was 314,489.07, with some amounts still being owed as far back as 2018 and 2017. Yesterday morning, I again polled and printed the most recent information for their unpaid taxes and penalties or interest, and that total had risen to 316,305.51. This morning, all of their unpaid taxes, with the exception of 22,627.16, have suddenly been paid, just in time for today's meeting. Almost exactly one year ago, information was presented at the planning and zoning meeting, showing that Call Valley had a lot of workplace violations through IMSA that are also, or were also severely delinquent. At that meeting, planning and zoning voted not to recommend the SUP for approval, not based on that particular factor. After that meeting, many of those signs, fines were also just suddenly paid. This is a huge red flag. It should be obvious that suddenly paying old and delinquent bills that they rightfully and lawfully owe, right after those delinquencies are brought to light at these meetings, is a sad attempt to quickly wash their dirty laundry. Call Valley could have paid these delinquent real estate taxes anytime, and yet, they did not. Even in the past year, the disSUP process, or what I'm hearing, two years, has been active. They did not pay these taxes. They didn't pay anything until it was brought to light here at these meetings. They could suddenly pay these old and delinquent bills, but they can't erase their long and consistent pattern of non-payment. A pattern of behavior across the years does not disappear in a day. The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. The Board of County Commissioners should seriously, should seriously pose this question to themselves, why do they believe Call Valley would make timely $50,000 payments, royalty payments, impact fees, to Leavenworth County, when they don't even pay their real estate taxes for the county where they're headquartered, or their own workplace violation fines? At least not until someone else shines a light on the issue. If a representative of Call Valley Company stands up here and says they're gonna pay Leavenworth County whatever they agree to pay them, do you believe them? Or do you look at their past history, which has been very well documented for you? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have updated information that I'll leave for everyone.
Did you say they paid those yesterday or today?
The treasurer's website for Wyandotte County that shows taxes, uh, real estate taxes, is updated once a day in an overhead process. So I pulled the information yesterday, taxes were still outstanding. They would have paid it at some time, probably in the last 48 hours, I assume, depending on how they're running things with COVID now. This morning, when I pulled them, almost all taxes showed as paid.
Okay, well, that's something we'll have to ask them about.
Where would you like me to stop?
Right there, in front of that laptop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for Dan Yates.
My name's Dan Yates. I live at 15256 Loring Road. I've been married to my wife, Dr. Deanne Yates, for 35 years. She was a neighborhood girl when I grew up in Shawnee, lived about a half a mile away. And the reason I tell you this is because you guys all live in Leavenworth County. We're all neighbors. One of your kids, one of your grandkids, might end up dating somebody that lives down here. It's a very real possibility. And I'll tell you why. I'm gonna talk about my neighbors. You guys have all heard about how the roads have no shoulders, they're not set for trucks. I'm not gonna hash all that stuff over. You've already heard it, and anybody that's driven them knows it. It's not a, a secret. About six months ago, I was working at Raytown, and it was a guy smoking some barbecue there. I struck up a conversation with him, talked to him for about 20 minutes, and he was catering his company's Christmas party. And I told him, he said, I have a daughter that goes to KU. And I said, really? And he goes, yeah. He said, where do you live? And I said, well, I'm like four minutes from 10 Highway. If she ever needs anything, here's one of my cards. Breaks down, whatever, I'm right there, because he lives in Raytown. He goes, man, I really appreciate that. He had a chief's jacket on, we're all, I consider we're all neighbors. Everybody lives in Camp City. So about 30 minutes later, he was getting ready to go to his party, came out with a big plate of Rieskin. And that's the kind of neighbor I want. Neighbors look out for each other. And I know if I saw that guy on the side of the highway with a flat tire, I'd recognize his truck. And he would probably be recognizing mine, because we talked to each other long enough, we would know. And he would be the kind of guy that he'd outhand me changing a flat or do wherever I needed. You know, same way with my neighbors around here. You know, you've got people out here that aren't getting paid to do anything, and they have compiled an 1,100-page report for the last 11 nights. I've been reading 100 pages a night. I don't know if you guys have, but I have. I know exactly what's in that thing. And I've got a little bit of content, very little, but these people have worked really hard. And that's the kind of neighbors I want. They're looking out for me. You guys are our neighbors. You should be looking out for us. I mean, when you get up in the morning and you look in the mirror, you're brushing your teeth, you need to look in the mirror and ask yourself, am I the kind of person somebody would want for a neighbor? You've got to ask yourself that, because you guys are our neighbors. You should be watching out for us. I mean, I respectfully think that with all of the evidence that's been presented, and the testimony, and the number of people that have come out, we're not NIMBYs. It's not that we don't want it in our backyard. It's, it's a safety issue.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
So.
Thank you. Ready for Ben Morgan?
Hi, Commissioners. Ben Morgan, 12548158th Street. Commissioners, you've been presented with a decision that could be a life sentence to the residents of Leavenworth County if an SUP is approved. You've stated that you make your fa, your decisions based on facts which have been provided. You've asked to have our concerns in writing. Those too have been provided. You've told us that you make your decisions in accordance with the law. Therefore, we believe the golden factors should be carefully used in your decision-making. Is a property owner, owner justified to engage in a business agreement if it negatively affects the rest of the community? Even if an applicant promises to upgrade a road, will you discredit the rest of the concerns from the county citizens? Will you allow the benefit of a private business for the sake of public safety? Will you disregard the patterns of non-compliance demonstrated by the applicant despite the warnings from the community? Will you allow a non-resident, private enterprise to make a profit while your constituents take a loss to their property value and quality of life? Or will you support the concerns of the sheriff? Will you value and uphold the decisions previously made by the planning commission? Will you do your part to maintain rural lifestyles as advertised in the comprehensive plan? Will you rise to the call of the residents and protect their quality of life? Will you let the Leavenworth County voters see that you prioritize their health and their safety? Will you show the citizens that you listen to their concerns? Will you be guided by the wisdom to make the right decisions on behalf of all of the county, rather than just a certain district? Will you continue to demonstrate that you're pro-business, but not for the sake of safety and financial risk to the county and the constituents? Tonight, this choice is yours, Commissioners. Do the right thing for Leavenworth County. Do the right thing for me and my young children. Do it for the shaky young teenage drivers and the stressed-out bus drivers. Do the right thing for the multitude standing outside the courthouse in the heat right now, or for the over 700 folks that signed that petition. Do the right thing for you. Be the leaders that you were called to be and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for Angela Morgan?
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Angela Morgan, 12548158th Street. I'm a consultant to the Lenape Drainage District. I was requested to review the proposed documents for Lenape Sand Quarry, for the district approval. I provided a report back to the project engineer on May 20th, and I received acknowledgement of the receipt of the report, but have not had any response to the comments or further documents provided to date. The report was approximately 20 pages in length, and it took about two hours with me and the Lenape Drainage District Board to go through it in its entirety. You guys have that report in front of you. I'm just gonna go through the three major factors that really impacted to the decision we came to. In regard to the floodplain impacts, there's three models that you do. You do a base model, a pre-project condition model, and then after the project is built model. And the study stated that no changes occurred between the base effective model and the pre-project condition models. So the base pro, base effective model was completed in 1977, and Google Earth imagery indicates that the golf course was not, was not there prior to 1991. So this means that the pre-project conditions have changed since the base effective model was done. So I spoke with Janelle Phillips at the Division of Water Resources with KDA, and she confirmed that any man-made modifications within the floodplain between the base model of 1977 and the proposed modification should be incorporated into what we call the pre-project conditions model. So this model needs to be created to include the golf course and its potential impacts to floodwaters. Another error was the two cross-sections that actually go through the proposed project site. They, the modeling software, you have to manually input those cross-sections, and the cross-sections that was provided on the plans didn't match the cross-sections that were actually in the modeling software. So again, I pointed this out and asked if I had gotten the right cross-sections for the modeling software from Janelle, and she confirmed, yes, those cross-sections were correct, and that those don't match the plans provided. So again, these two errors, along with some other minor errors that are noted in that report, indicate that the true impacts of the project in the floodplain have not actually been established. And so in regards to the stormwater permit, which is also the district's jurisdiction, the written narrative states the site would be a zero-discharge site. So I reached out to Eric Sobb with the Bureau of Water and asked about industrial-use stormwater. And he did state that there is, if there is potential for a discharge, then an industrial-use permit would be required. So if you go back to the modeling, it, it shows that the berm and the quarries over top at the 50-year storm and the 100-year storm. So that, to me, indicates a potential for a discharge from the site itself for stormwater. So he agreed that if the potential is there, it should have an industrial use permit, which we do not have today. In general, there were other.
Is that due from the Division of Water Resources?
Yep. Yep.
Time's up. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, and were you speaking as a citizen, or were you speaking as a representative?
Uh, Lenape Drainage District. They asked me to come today and kind of state those findings, in case you just.
Anthony Schmidt. We're ready for Anthony Schmidt.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tony Schmidt. I live at 17322 Golden Road. I am strongly opposed to the sand pit for more reasons than I can give in three minutes. There are the roads and the compliance with the golden rules among several other factors. The main topic I want to discuss is the almost $25,000 the county, excuse me, paid to Olson Engineering for a proper road study, and Call Valley's lack of a response. If you do a study and come up with a scope and then relay that information to the applicant, shouldn't that be the end of it? Meaning, this is what it will take if you want to go forward with your proposal? Instead, Call Valley, accepting this, they had yet another road study done. My question to the commission is, why is everyone here tonight? This should already have been resolved with Call Valley's denial of your recommendation. Over the course of the last 18 months, the applicant has changed their proposal several times, to haul out several times, and several road studies that do not come close to what is needed. Every time they make changes, is it because, is it because of public outcry? They want us to believe they are trying to find the best way to proceed with their endeavor with, with the least impact. In reality, Call Valley is only considering how to do this as cheaply as possible. If approved, they will do whatever they can to make money, whether it follows the proposal or not. Who will monitor them? Call Valley has demonstrated through their actions that they have no problem bending or break, even breaking the rules. They have taxes that are delinquent for the last several years. I'll be the first to, excuse me, the first to say, I don't like paying taxes either. It's just part of doing business. Call Valley has more than the national average of IMSA violations, which translates to worker safety being neglected. This board should find that with all the information presented to you, Call Valley and a sand pit operation do not belong in southern Leavenworth County. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Schmidt.
Hi, my name's Stacy Schmidt. My address is 17322 Golden Road. Thank you to the board for allowing this meeting to be held in the evening so the public could attend. A map has been printed for you for visual aid. We think that this speaks louder than words. We'd like to update the commissioners of the current count on the petition opposing the sand pit. At this time, there are 758 signatures representing 481 properties, addresses that are in opposition of the sand pit. Each blue X matches an address that indicates a registered voter or voters who feel that a sand dredging operation does not fit the characteristic of the neighborhood. I would also like to remind the commis, commissioners. I would also like to remind the commissioners of the 380 pages of public comment included in the administrative packet. 376 of those 380 pages are citizens stating valid concerns for denial. Four pages are supportive. Over 120 taxpayers make up the contents of the 376 pages in opposition. That is a 1 to 30 ratio. I will repeat, one person in support of the proposal to every 30 that is in opposition. In closing, as stewards, your choices matter. They matter to our families, our communities, and generations to come. Together, your choices are powerful. Make the most powerful choice tonight and deny the sand pit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for Mike McDonald.
I am Michael, I'll take this mask off. I am Michael McDonald, 14439 Wood End Road. You are the commissioners for all of Leavenworth County. Your duty is to make decisions that guide the direction of the county and have impacts for years and even decades. You're entrusted with tremendous power to bend the economy, shape the environment, and affect the quality of life in many different directions. Tonight is one of those hard decision nights, but you have resources to help you. We have planning and zoning professionals and experienced attorneys to assist in evaluating proposals. We have a comprehensive land use plan that is developed by the residents and approved by the county commission. We have case law presidents from similar cases in Leavenworth County and across the state of Kansas. The rezoning special use process allows for considerable input from the public to their elected officials. These are the people, residents, citizens, taxpayers, who may be harmed by such a proposal. The public has spoken. You've received hundreds of pages of comments, letters, numerous phone calls, and you've heard from many at the many different public hearings that we have had in the last 18 months on this matter. Please evaluate this matter for the benefit of all of the county. Simply owning property does not give one the right to do whatever one wants to do. There are rules, regulations, previous decisions, legal opinions, and more that are intended to protect neighbors and the larger community from adverse impacts of inappropriate actions by others. Do you stand with the residents of your county? Please consider some key observations. Sheriff Dedekie has stated his opposition to the proposal. It was denied by the planning commission. No substantive benefit to the county has ever been demonstrated. Roadway safety concerns for school buses, motorists, and others are real. Health concerns from blowing silica dust are real. Property values will decrease, which adversely impacts the long-term revenue to the county. Ultimately, can you explain to others, why would the county seek to approve a project with such negative impacts on roadway safety, the health of county residents, property values, and the cost in rebuilding of other roads that are used by the pit customers? I urge you to please vote no on this sand mine proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for Wendy Pettibone.
Phone call.
Becky's up there. This one's calling in.
Ms. Pettibone?
Yeah.
You can now begin your public comment.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Linda Pettibone. My address is 20076 219th Street in Tonkin County. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak in opposition to the Lenape Sand Plant Project. I would like to ask that my comments be made part of the public record. Tonight, I want to talk about safety concerns around the proposed haul route. I'm very thankful that I don't live along the haul route, but a lot of people do. I counted the number of driveways along the haul route to see how many families would be impacted. I counted 39 residential driveways in Leavenworth County and a total of 26 driveways in Wyandotte County. Five of the driveways in Wyandotte County belong to businesses, but 21 are residential. A lot of those people have kids who ride buses to school in either the Basin-Linwood School District or the Bonner Springs-Edwardsville School District. In Leavenworth County, I found out that there are five buses carrying 490 kids to Basin-Linwood School. Call Valley trucks would be on the road during the same time as the buses. In September of 2019, David Howard, the superintendent of Basin-Linwood School District, together with the Board of Education, wrote a letter to the Leavenworth County Commissioners expressing concerns about unsafe road conditions. They asked the commissioners to give thoughtful consideration to road safety as growth opportunities are reviewed in the county. In July of 2019, Dan Gungart, the superintendent of the Bonner Springs-Edwardsville School District, wrote an even more targeted letter to the Leavenworth County Planning and Learning Commission. Mr. Gungart expressed the school district's concern over the proposed quarry, stating that the quarry poses a potential safety concern for U S D 204 students and bus drivers. Quoting from the letter, "The large trucks traveling down a narrow two-lane road with little to no shoulder is going to be extremely dangerous, even more so during periods of inclement weather." End quote. Clearly, this proposed combination of truck traffic and school buses along the haul route is a safety issue. Thank you for considering this issue when you make your decision.
Thank you. And we have another call in.
(phone rings)
Linda Koska.
Hello?
Ms. Koska?
Yes.
Hi, we are ready for your public comment.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Linda Koska. I live at 14916 150th Street in Bonner Springs, Kansas. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and I would like this comment to be recorded on public record. We have represented ourselves several times at your meetings and explained our concerns on the Lenape Sand Pit. The sheriff has written you a letter expressing his concern and the two school districts have written you letters expressing their concerns for the safety of their children on buses in your county. Commissioner Smith called my daughter's house to let her know he received a letter expressing concern on the Lenape Sand Pit. I answered the phone. During our conversation, he shared with me that he agreed the county roads were not made for this kind of traffic and he was previously over-rode, so I value his opinion. The commissioners previously denied a doggy daycare permit even though none of the neighbors directly objected. But because they thought there might be too much noise, the commissioner had rejected the proposal. Yet, do you not consider the noise and possible dangers to your county residents on the roads from Call Valley trucks? No one would want 128 to 160 large trucks going by their house in an eight-hour day. Many of your residents use the road that goes over the bridge to DeSoto. The impact of these trucks on that traffic, along with the train traffic, will cause delays of your citizens getting to work and increase the danger on this narrow two-lane road with no shoulders to pull their car off, especially if their car breaks down. Please consider your constituents are asking you to do, deny the pit, just as Leavenworth County Planning Commission denied it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And we're ready for Sarah Williams.
There are two doggy daycares. There was just one, wasn't there? I don't know if one was denied. I remember denying one.
We did? Yeah, I thought we approved.
I imagine that that last speaker just picked her full three minutes, so it's taking a little time to bring.
Right. No, I'm sure Becky just went to get her.
She's had some challenging logistics.
Becky's doing a great job.
Awesome.
Yeah, she won't need to work out now.
I know.
Literally.
Yeah, steps.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Sarah Williams, 12725 166th Street. Good evening Commissioners. I imagine you were tired of hearing that the Lenape Sand Quarry proposal is bad for Leavenworth County in so many ways. The economics make no sense, the risk to the health of our citizens is real, even on reconstructed roads. The safety of our citizens and those entering our county through its southern gateway will be compromised. You know this to be true. Your decision boils down to a simple question. Do you allow Call Valley Industries to take over the southern end of our county for generations to come, knowing the harm they will do to me and over 700 other concerned citizens? The answer is a simple and resounding no. I'd like to leave you with the Spring family's own words in 2002. I am representing the Spring family and their property is adjacent to the property that is being discussed. Under the existing zoning, the land can be developed as rural residential. The property on the bluff may not have soil conditions suitable for passing a PERC test. Wastewater systems could be constructed to serve the area. The Springs property does have soil appropriate for a septic system. With quarry industry next door, it would not be possible to develop that land for rural residential use. The growth trend shows more people are moving to rural locations to get out of the bigger cities. The existing railroad forms the perfect divider between different zoning classifications. The railroad barrier is also a problem for any trucks that want to travel through DeSoto. If there is a train blocking the tracks, there are going to be trucks trying to use the dirt roads to try to get around and cause the roads more damage. The appearance of the trucks will not maintain the rural character. Residential developments bring people to the area to live for a lifetime. Traffic concerns are great. It is not the number of trips that will cause the problem, but it's the type of traffic. The comprehensive plan shows this area as rural residential, not industrial. Have all environmental issues been looked at? That's from the Spring family representative fighting a quarry in 2002. And that's all. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. We're ready for Terry Williams.
He's not, he has to hang tonight.
So he won't be here?
That's like planned. He's not here.
Okay. That's it for opposition. If we go ahead, we'll go ahead with people in favor. Do we believe the Knutsons are up first?
Mr. Speak.
No? No? Okay. And Amy's not here?
That would be, that's the end.
Okay, so then we can take this time to follow up on Call Valley's proposal. Any follow-up?
I do have a few comments, please. Let me figure out how to take this off. Well, first of all, in all sincerity, I want to thank all the residents who came here tonight to voice their concerns. There's no question that any industrial, commercial use of this property will bring in opposition from residents who don't want the quality of their life changed in any manner. But the truth of the matter is, these same residents would oppose any commercial or industrial use of that area down there. The property where this sand quarry is going to be located has been zoned for industrial use for, since 1962. It was no surprise to anyone that eventually some sort of industrial or commercial use is going to be made of that property. The project is not going on any property that is currently being occupied by any residences. These residents are at least a half-mile away and at least further than that for the majority of the residents there. Now, the first person who spoke, and I posited by mispronouncing her name, and it was Andrew Boo, who's a lawyer, who came out here and talked about the golden factors. I wanted to be clear that on two occasions, the very staff that we've heard all night have diligently reviewed this project, have come out and reviewed all the aspects of the SUP and they have said, and we have this in our presentation, it's in a letter from Ms. Loff, that the proposed use, along with the recommended conditions, meet the golden factors for development. So contrary to what you've heard tonight, the golden factors were considered by the staff. They were considered by the county attorney. And the recommendation from your staff on two occasions in 2019 and again in 2020 was that the golden factors were considered and despite the opposition from the various sources and from the residents and the concerns, the golden factors are complied with as long as the conditions are satisfied. And let the record be clear that the only dispute we have with the recommendations from the county tonight is we are willing to meet all their conditions. We believe that imposing the requirement on Call Valley to come in and bear the unknown costs and expense of building a whole new road when there's been no evidence presented that building a whole new road is necessary, that is arbitrary and capricious. There's no basis upon or foundation upon which that decision can be reached by this body. In addition, when you consider whatever you rule tonight, if you say that you go along with the staff's recommendation, any future development coming into that area that's going to use trucks are going to know that they are too are going to have to build a brand-new road as a condition of starting an operation there and that the cost and expense has to be paid in advance and it's an unknown cost and expense and that they have to do that before they start operation. What you're doing is putting a death mill on any future development of commercial or industrial uses in that area because no one can afford to do that, especially when it's not necessary by the analysis and reports that were prepared. Second of all, I want to address this real quickly. As we said, Ms. Boo also said there's no economic benefit. Apparently, I didn't make myself clear earlier when I said, our proposal sets out that for each ton of sand brought out of there, Call Valley's going to pay a royalty to the county. And we told you that we anticipate 500,000 tons a year. That's $75,000 a year, just on royalties alone. So that is an economic benefit. The math that was done here, I would say it's correct except for one factor. Remember, this project's going to be developed in phases. It's not going to be 160 acres in operation. As one phase gets used and the sand is taken out of that, they open up another section. So there's not going to be 160 acres being mined and quarried at one particular time so you could get whatever the amount of sand being taken out of that. But even so, there's larger sand coming out, a higher royalty will be paid to, by Call Valley to the county. But I think we have to keep in mind, this project is being developed in stages. We set out the stages in our presentation that we've given to you in the book and you can see that, that it's not going to be 160-acre mining operation at any one particular time.
Excuse me, how can Leavenworth County be confident that you will pay those fees?
Well, I think in the staff's recommendation that the SUP gets renewed each year. Same with taxes. We've heard a lot of arguments and discussion about whether or not real estate taxes have been paid. I think if reference check, the Wyandotte County taxes have been paid for and the money was in escrow last Thursday with First American Title Company.
But you just, you just paid those. Was that because this hearing was kind of-
Had nothing to do with this. Had everything to do with the refinancing that went through where Call Valley refinanced with a bank, another bank that was supposed to be, that is now escrowing. All the taxes will be escrowed each month for payment of taxes.
So why haven't you been so delayed on paying your taxes? $300,000.
Well, I think the question's, I think the dispute why we changed banks is that because the bank that Call Valley was previously dealing with was supposed to be paying the escrow in the taxes each month and they didn't do that. And Call Valley then chose another bank to come in that has the financial resources and as of last Thursday, there was a closing on that transaction and all taxes were paid.
So it wasn't that you didn't have the resources, it was just the-
It was a dispute with the bank.
Okay.
Whether or not there to be. But to answer your question, to answer questions raised by the residents, Call Valley breaches its obligation. You're not going to renew the SUP each. You're going to say you failed to pay your taxes, you failed to pay your royalties. We're not going to renew- We're not going to renew the S U P for the following year. So they have every incentive to pay for the taxes and the royalties going forward.
Would you provide a tax clearance letter to the county on that, to that effect?
I think, yes, I will definitely get that to you. And I think one lady, I might forget which one, said that she checked as of today, all the 26,000 has been paid, and I can assure you that. We will get that. If you want, we'll get you tax clearance from Wyandotte County, because the new bank required all taxes to be paid in full, we wouldn't have made the loan. There were some questions about citations and all this, and in your packet, you're going to see a letter from M Shaw, dated March 19, 2020, written to Chris Arnold at Call Valley by Eric Peterson, who's with M Shaw. And Chris, for the three mines you have listed, and there's only three mines, there are no outstanding civil penalties, and you are in good standing. You have that information in your packet.
Is that dated in March, though?
Yes, March 19, 2020.
Is that current?
Yes. And then there was a question about safety at the other wet plants and all that. We've given you a chart that shows the citations. Since 2007, there's been a total of 17 citations issued with total fines of less than $5,000. Okay, so you have three plants over, what is that, 13 years, and you got a total of $5,000 in fines. They've all been paid. Talking about safety of their employees, of all the employees over, I guess it's a 13-year time period, there were three minor injuries and zero major injuries. The range of fines, 70% of those fines were under $200. So they were minor infractions. Every company, even the five mining quarries you have here in Leavenworth, if you do the check, will have some kind of minor infraction. So the record will reflect that.
How many employees do you have total that we're talking about?
That are going to be on site?
Well, that are being checked by...
We've got 125 employees. 125 employees. We also gave you a chart in our presentation in your book. It's from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration Report, which shows the last inspection that was conducted on the Call Valley equipment and for injuries over the last 24 months. And it shows that Call Valley is below the national average in every category on which the inspection is conducted. So we could talk about statistics, we could talk about safety factors, and Call Valley not living up to its requirements to have adequate safety plans in effect, and that it's not safe with its mining operations or with its drivers, but the documentation that we have that's provided to you shows something to the contrary.
Just real quick, you've mentioned 125, 125 employees, and I know there's been discussions about how many are actually on the site. Just, I'm curious, how many?
Plan operations, the wet side range from, you know, two to three people, basically three people at the wet side. And we've got our facilities, we have multiple, we have a wet side, and we have, which is what we're proposing at Leavenworth County. But we do have, do employ for our industrial, industrial driving facilities and our other divisions.
What I was trying to go is, I was just curious, there's been a lot of conversation between Wyandotte and Leavenworth County and operations and everything else. So any idea how many of your employees reside in Leavenworth County?
Right now, we have got a few of them, parts of some homes, but just over 30 of our employees live in Leavenworth County. And once again, there's not going to be a lot of people actually working, I think we're due to the three to five employees at that site on the staff's recommendation. And it's not going to be operating 24/7. There are specific hours of operation that the staff has recommended that my client is willing to agree to and accept. And as I said...
I just wondered, would that be new employees for Leavenworth County, or would it be people you're just transferring over there? Would we be getting some new jobs?
Yes, and would it be adding additional five, three, five...
They'd be additional hires. Okay.
And I think the ultimate safeguards for this commission and for the county, if Call Valley hadn't lived up to its obligations as set forth within the recommendations from the staff and from the county, and I've already noted my exception to the building of a new road, Call Valley is not going to get its S U P renewed each year. So it understands, it has to meet its financial obligations to the county, it has to operate those trucks in a safe manner to protect the residents and to, you know, abide by the regulations set forth by the county, by the sheriff, whoever. And if they don't, they lose the S U P, which results in significant financial loss to them. While at the same time, I just want to leave on this proposition. I've said it earlier, the county has lost a substantial sum of money due to the pandemic. It's no one's fault. Somehow that money has to be replaced by this commission or by the county, or it's going to continue to have, you know, further layoffs or inability to fund projects and make cost, pet costs. If this project gets approved by this commission, there's going to be a source of revenue from Call Valley, but more importantly, I think it'll open up the door for other industrial and commercial uses, which have been prohibited and prevented from going into that area going forward, which will generate sources of significant income and revenue for this county and for the betterment of its residents. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Could you speak a little bit on the Lenape Drainage District representative we heard from earlier?
We provided our, we provided the response to them, and they gave us, sent back some comments, and we did not feel that the Lenape County sewer district, their concerns...
Drainage District.
Were important or necessary to get approval from the county, and certainly the county never came back to us and said, "You need to take care of the Lenape sewer before we give you our approval." It's not set forth in their approval.
But you do have all your necessary state and federal permits?
Yes. And there's nothing in any of the county reports suggesting that we don't have all the necessary levels.
So if, I think that Lenape consultant was saying that if there's a possibility of a discharge at any point within that flood plain or floodway, that you would need to get an additional approval, and that's the position of the Lenape Drainage District. Is that something that you're going to work out with them, or you're going to continue to be in conversation with them about?
Well, I'm certainly not prohibiting or precluding any further conversation, but I think it should be clear that Call Valley gets the permit to operate down there, it's going to comply with all local, state, and federal regulations regarding the operation of that plant.
I guess, I think she was saying that she didn't believe that you had at this point.
Well, we have not received any denial of any approval we've asked for, and we certainly haven't been asked by the county, that they're holding up their approval and recommendation of approval for this project because any particular county, local, or federal agency has not approved this project.
Okay, a couple more questions. On property taxes, we had the report on, you know, we have a lot of rural estates in that area that are five, six, $700,000 homes on 10 acres, 20 acres, and we get a lot of, the county gets property tax value out of that. And are you completely discounting, 100% discounting the fact that property tax valuations or the value of people's property could go down when they have this industrial development located nearby? You're denying that?
No, I'm not denying that, sir. I'm not denying that at all. Do I think there could be an adverse effect on some of the property owners? Of course. That happens in any development in any area. There could be adverse financial consequences where the properties would be affected by the plant or the other industrial development down in that area. Do I believe that the property three miles away or two and a half miles away, do I believe that it'll have a long-term effect on the property? No.
So potentially, some of the amount we bring into the county could be affected by those drops of value?
I agree with that.
What is the plan for the railroad crossing? My understanding is that when that crossing is blocked by trains, are you going to reroute your trucks, or are you going to just wait, or do you have a plan for that?
I don't see, we're just going to wait like every other traffic.
Well, I mean, if it's, what if the train's sitting there for a substantial length of time?
What does the other traffic do?
It turns around and goes back the other way.
I had a question kind of on that. Are your drivers paid by the hour, by the haul, or by the ton, or?
Paid by the hour.
By the hour?
There's no incentive for drivers to do, you know, deliver more trucks per day or loads per day, they don't get any more compensation.
So you're planning to wait on the route, though? That's the answer?
Yeah, where would it go?
Go back and go the other route, I guess.
It's not a route. That's not a route. It's not a route.
Well, I'm just asking the question, if you're planning to...
We're staying with our... And the drivers will be instructed, sir, that of what they're expecting in the event that there's a long delay because of a railroad crossing.
Okay, and the question is... Hold on, I'm actually concerned for all the residents. You need to get these railroads under control. I have no control over the road. Got a big issue with these railroads.
You're the civic, Eric, you should help me get your civic, would you please do it?
Well, they're the competition. Another question is about, we have the trucks that are going to be driving, which are the designated trucks on the route. Are you also going to have contractors that could come and purchase product at the location and bring a truck in? And they would, of course, not be underneath the haul route. I mean, and what percent of your business would be that type of business?
Very small percent, because we're going to be taking the sand from our wet point to get it dry.
So you're not going to have people find or... Okay, well, that was some of the comments that they thought that contractors would be coming there, and you're saying that's not correct?
I believe that's not, that is not correct. Once again, the county staff is going to be reviewing that every year to determine whether or not we're complying with their conditions.
Leavenworth County cannot come down by ice control sand?
Trouble too. I mean, if that's a condition, yes, you can buy sand from us, but no.
We probably, ice control sands, a little less expensive.
It'd be an excellent source for you.
Any other questions?
Just at the applicant, you'd maintain that all conditions as far as staff has laid out has been met, other than the recommendation from our third-party consultant as far as the replacement of the roadway versus the ongoing maintenance and investment in the existing roadway?
I would say that they will be met, not because, we haven't met them yet, because they're imposed upon us if the S U P is granted.
Right.
And I'm telling the board that if the S U P is granted, Call Valley is committed to comply with each of the conditions, except for our argument that we have here today, whether or not a new road needs to be built as opposed to other maintenance and reviews. So I think we'll comply with each of the conditions set forth in the staff's report that need to be imposed.
Well, I doubt anybody's done it yet. I mean, one thing I did want to bring up to both the applicant and those in opposition is an apology. And that apology is, I think there's been a number of staff changes throughout your journey. I think there's been a number of policies that we've recognized need to be improved. I think we've consulted with third parties because we, you know, when things become more complex, you need more resources than what we have internally. And so, good, bad, or otherwise, I think you guys have been in a position that a lot of our education, good, bad, or otherwise, we're here to get better. And I want everybody to know that. And for all those in opposition as well, apologies, because a lot of, I think, mistakes have been found over time. And you know what? There's a lot of really smart people in Leavenworth County. I want to remind everybody that whether it's your local city or the county, you're just as smart in a lot of cases, you may be a lot smarter and realize that we'd love to have you at the county if anybody'd like to quit their day job, and we're hiring. So, you know, keep that in mind, and while I think most everybody's been very respectful through that process, I do think all those, both in opposition and the applicant, you know, an apology, because I think we've learned a lot. And it's not through intent. I think everybody has to realize that intentions, whether it's an error in a document, or the timing of a document, or anything else, the intentions are largely, I think, misconstrued versus, people make mistakes, and it's unfortunate. And I think there's been a lot of people that have had to pay for those mistakes.
I started off my presentation by saying thank you to Crystal and her staff, and I will end it by saying, even though we don't agree on every issue, she's had a yeoman's chore and task and responsibility before her, and she tackled it professionally, and we appreciate all she did. She was always open to us for communication, and I just want to thank her, because I know it's a tough job dealing with us.
It is. Tough job. Any other questions?
Yeah. Danny, how many trucks and trailers does Call Valley have, roughly?
Commissioner, we run on a hauling material basis, 15 trucks.
I mean, how many do you own?
How many do we own? We own the 15.
Trucks and trailers, okay. So those could be tagged in Leavenworth County?
It could be, but...
Once you own property in Leavenworth County.
Under the, they are, under the IRP registration, which is state-assessed through the state of Kansas.
Okay.
We are also now allowed to, under the conditions of the staff, trucks might be left on site.
Okay, and that's kind of what I thought, but in the previous application for the quarry 10 years ago, or 2002, 20 years ago, they had put in the conditions that all the vehicles be tagged in Leavenworth County, so I thought that was odd.
The trucks will come from Wyandotte County, airborne, unloaded.
Right.
Pick up a load, turn around, and go back.
Yeah.
That's the process.
Maybe it's changed since then? I don't know. Okay. So you contract out other truck companies to haul, or those...
For this haul, hauling to our facility in Edwardsville, it'll be only our trucks.
Okay. So it'll just be those 15 back and forth?
Yeah, and it won't be all the 15. And as Commissioner was concerned about the backup of the trains, yes, it's hard to turn a truck around if you have one shows up there and trains there, but we do electronic devices. If there's a backup of two hours, we're going to stop them before they're at that situation. They don't make anybody money sitting still.
You're fencing in your noise mitigation, what's the kind of criteria you use to determine that?
Well, we use criteria recommended by the staff, and that we're going to follow. Jesse, you had that information, you want to go through that with them? We have it in our presentation booklet, what we're going to do, the terms and fencing around the pond.
So with respect to noise, there are, studies were conducted, and using the worst-case scenarios, the noise levels at the residences and also at the golf course will be under the allowable limits for those locations. And again, as we've talked about, the quarry will move in phases. There are six different phases, and so six different operations of quarrying. And the noise, when it is closest to, let's say, the residence, that would be phase, that would be phase six. So it's one phase, and during that phase, the worst-case scenario is that the noise levels would be below the allowable limits for residential zone. In terms of further mitigation that's being taken with respect to noise, there will only be daytime operations from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Like we've talked about, the dredging is limited to phased dredging, so the entire property won't be dredged at one point in time. It will go through six different locations over the lifetime of the project. The site is a large site, and sound waves lose intensity as they, as they travel. There will be electric and not diesel machinery and equipment that's being used to dredge and process the sand. One of the conditions is that the processing equipment will be turned off when it's not in use, and that's what Call Valley will do. It will be well-maintained, and there will be an 80-foot buffer along the southern boundary with trees planted on top to provide further noise mitigation at the southern boundary of the property along the golf course also.
I'd like to also add that staff found that noise levels will be within standard limits... limits and generally less than agriculture's, because it's fine by staff.
What about less than railroad?
Well, what time of the day is the road going through?
All day?
Yes.
All night?
All night. And during the road, I've got, they already asked Council back there, she would do something, but she won't.
Matt, you also spoke of the phases. Now, that phase is, that's, that's in your new, that's, that's the new document we got, was the phases, correct?
The phases have been part of the project all along. That, that's not a factor that has changed.
I mean, it's phase six, that's the first time, I mean, when I was reading through this, I, I mean, so...
I think there's a misconception, sir, on how a sand plant actually works, how quarry actually works. When we were in front of the planning commission, most of the questions that were asked seemed to indicate, okay, we've got 220 acres, we're going there day one, build this 180-acre lot, and we're going to find a pond, and then start dredging sand immediately. That's just not how it works. It has to be done in stages, because you've got, the equipment has to be brought in, it has to be, sand, the sand has to be dredged out, and once that sand is taken from that particular area, then you expand it to a larger area, and you start bringing in more, you're able to take additional sand that wasn't there in the previous stage. So I think one of the reasons why we put in our book, was not that we didn't address it earlier, there was a misconception from the planning commission as to how these operations actually work. We wanted to make sure, we tried to impart that information to you, so you understood exactly how it's going to work.
This is Commissioner Carr.
Go ahead.
What will, what will Call Valley be doing with the overburden? Will they be using that for the establishing the berms? And, and then, over time, what will be the use of the overburden?
It's designed to stock power on the side, and then when we go to, for reclamation, and slope the berms at the end of its life, that would grade the burbs back, slope it for an easier walk to the, to the lake.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody?
I know we, again, so we've had the zoning discussion and current use versus allowable uses. Is anybody, are there any other use cases for flood ground? Because as far as I know, outside of ag or industrial, you can't construct. Are there other uses that I'm unaware of?
Commercial.
That'd be industrial, but I mean...
Yeah, residential buildings right there. But there are, how many good examples there are on 7th Highway, right between the river? There are on 43rd, about there.
Are you with Call Valley?
No.
Okay. I think we need to stick with Call Valley for rebuttal.
Commissioner, would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, so as far as I knew, you had to go through FEMA, you had to be at a certain height that's very difficult, oftentimes, if you're in a floodplain.
So, this property, as we all know, is located within the floodway, and it's very, very difficult to build permanent structures within the floodway. It is also, according to FEMA regulations and our own floodplain regulations, you cannot have a septic system within a floodplain or a floodway. So development outside of these sorts of operations, or like you said, agriculture, is very, very difficult. There are places where development has occurred, most of the time that development is what we would consider grandfathered in. It's been there for a really long time. I'm not saying that it's impossible.
Or is along the river, but maybe outside of the floodway, because it's high enough, it's on a bluff.
Right, it may, it may very well be. And like I said, I'm not saying that it's impossible. I'm saying that it's very difficult, it's very expensive, things have to be elevated above the floodway. We have an example up on the Missouri River where the Ergon Asphalt Plant, they had some damage in the last flooding, and it took them a year and a half to be able to get their plans approved by the state in order to rebuild what had already been there. So to answer your question, as far as development in a floodway, there's not a lot of development opportunities that are feasible. Of course, with enough money, you can do just about anything, but this is a very typical...
But you've got to get the necessary permit.
Correct.
And I would add that if you're able to get flood insurance, it's very, very difficult. The cost of that flood insurance is almost prohibitive, or any other use besides what that property is on board.
Okay. A question about insurance, insurity bonds, and protection from liability. Do you, do you self-insure your company, or do you purchase insurance through an organization? Or tell us a little bit about how sand quarries do that type of insuring? And then the surety bonds for protecting water wells and that kind of thing?
Well, I don't know if there's a surety bond for protecting water wells, but there is, you know, liability insurance is through C-Biz Insurance Company, located in Plaza. All insurance required, so there, just went through getting the confirmation with the refinancing from the new bank that took place last week, evidence of all insurances in effect, that the coverage that was required by the bank, we had produced certificates of insurance stating that, that coverage was in effect, so we have liability insurance.
Yes, Crystal, when we renewed the rock quarry permit on 92 hams, we required all that, correct?
Well, we were, we had substantial conditions, yes. As far as rebuilding a road...
No, I'm talking about the insurance and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Insurance, that's, that's just a standard procedure.
Correct, yes.
You know, on any applicant. Yeah.
No, and I think you make, you make a great point, Counselor, regarding, you know, previous operations and previous commissions and decades and decades ago, and, you know, our jobs to figure out how to get more sophisticated. So I assure you, the next applicant that costs tens of thousands of dollars would probably be at the applicant's expense. Again, it's about, it's about learning and improving and getting better. But I, again, it's a very valid point. I agree with you, and I'm going to guess a lot of those renewals going forward look very different, so, but I appreciate you making the point.
Thank you. Okay, are we at the end of our time?
No, we still have a little time, but, or, was you going to, did you want staff's, any staff, additional staff information or questions, or...
Does anyone have any additional questions of planning, zoning, Crystal?
Well, I guess, kind of just walk us through, we've heard what the applicant's view of the process was. Can you walk us through what, what the, your view of what the process was and how we got to this point?
Commissioners, I, there are a few things that I think came up tonight that I don't know that they're a surprise. I think Mr. Joel's right, that most of this information we had is just a matter of disagreement. But some of the, some of the statements that were made, as far as the reconstruction of the road, there's not just one thing that was considered when we came to that conclusion, or when Olson came to that conclusion. The Call Valley Engineering looked at the substance of the road as it currently stands, and came to one conclusion. But what started this whole process, and I don't disagree that there was a recommendation by staff that included a royalty fee and an annual fee, but during the planning commission, what came up is there were safety concerns. And so, if you recall, we actually engaged Wilson to review that and say, is there really an issue here? And they came back and said, yes, the statement that was made during the planning commission is accurate, there are some safety concerns, there are shoulders issues, there's also infrastructure that's under the surface, the cross culverts, crossroad culverts, and some other things, that are a point they have to be replaced. So we had to look at not just that will the road hold up, but what improvements need to be made to that road to make it safe before work, before any sand hauling commences. So when we looked at that, that, those improvements that were going to need to be made, which are not insignificant, plus the replacement of the infrastructure that's there that is failing or will not hold up to the increased traffic, on top of the increase in wear and tear on the road, the conclusion is that if you're doing that work, it makes more sense to do the reconstruction of the road, number one. Number two, the wear and tear starts the first day the trucks start rolling. The county collects money from them in the form of these royalties, but we don't know for sure how that road, road's going to hold up, number one. Number two, anything less than them doing what is proposed puts a potential liability on the county and the citizens of the county. If Call Valley goes in and starts their work, and the road degrades faster than we think, who picks up the tab? It's the county. We have to go in and get that taken care of. If, for whatever reason, we have to close that road down because of construction cycle, we've, we effectively shut down Call Valley as well, because that's their route. Is there a liability to the county to potential harm to them for not being able to haul sand during that time? We believe there is. That's another consideration we took in, saying the road needs to be completely reconstructed and improved before the work starts. We understand the hardship that that could cause, we weighed that, we had a meeting with Call Valley and with their representation, and we discussed this. And we looked for alternatives as far as financing goes. But again, and I think it was actually stated by someone tonight, when, when the conditions are come to by your staff, which is professional staff, and by Olson, which is a third-party firm, which is also a very professional firm and very competent and capable, they've proven that time and again, when that recommendation comes in, that this is the way, the only way we can, one, ensure that the safety issues are addressed, and two, protect the county from any potential financial exposure, then there's not, it's not a negotiation process at that time. And I think that was the confusion that maybe Mr. Joel and Call Valley had, is that this was a negotiation process when we came in and said, this is our recommendation, this is what has to happen. It, it's not a, well, could we build half the road, or we could, no, this is the recommendation. And I don't see that changing. I don't, I don't see any of the arguments tonight changing that recommendation by Olson and by your staff. And so I think you need to take that into consideration, that it's not just one of these things, when you look at it individually, that we may be able to get around, it's when you take it in totality. And that's why we came to the recommendation that we did. It's nothing against Call Valley, it's nothing against any of the other factors, because they have agreed to the other conditions that are on the, on the staff's recommendation, it's just this road construction. That's the one hanging point at this time.
And if somebody was, like, if we went ahead and said, okay, we'll, we'll build the road while this is ongoing, and we had somebody that was injured or hurt or, God forbid, killed, then we have the letter from our county councilor saying that it could expose the county to potential liability, and that's very problematic. And I think we need to take that into consideration.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Absolutely.
I, I think that has to be cleared, if those roads right now are not to standards, the county has a liability. You know, the roads are what they are, Call Valley didn't put those roads in the current condition, if the shoulders aren't correct, if they're not wide enough, or the chip and seal and mill and overlay program that's been instituted by the county leaves those roads in less desirable condition, that liability and statute that your county councilor told you about exists right now. What I, what I want to make sure is that, I leave here, and that you need to look at the report that was given by Olson engineers, and look and see, what's the recommendation? They build a whole new road and give a blank check, it costs how much money, involves all the litigation condemning these residents' property, which they won't enjoy, the cost of that, and you say, where is there any data or analysis reports that says the entire road has to be rebuilt before the start of the operation? Yes, I would like to have a new car, but that means I can't continue to build that old car. And I think you have to look at one other thing. The decision you make here today, if it's the staff's recommendation, that before any industrial or commercial use can be made of that property down that flood plains, that you have to build a new road, you are condemning that property to no use by any future use for development for industrial or commercial buyers or users, because they can't afford to go in there and build you a new road because you want a new road. Look at the data, the data does not support a new road, it supports continuation. They asked us to get our own, Call Valley Engineering, go out there, they told us where to do the pavement test, and we did it. They didn't like the results, but the results should say what they are. Mr. Francis told you, you don't have to rebuild that road right now.
I, I hear what you're saying, but we have a staff and we have Olson that's our engineering consultant, and that's, that's where it's at.
You've got a competent staff. I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying we disagree with them, and I think the data, analysis, studies support our position and not their conclusion.
How much of what they say a rail hub was?
And, we didn't even bring that up, but there, there is a state program to help put in rail spur, but, but I don't think Call Valley was really interested in that, but we did reach out to you folks on that.
Well, and while a recommendation was made, we have no idea, I mean, it's not been estimated, that would be, this road replacement would be an engineered road, which would take time and cost. And then, before you could go, yeah, before you could even get to a estimate of what that project for 3.3 or 4.2.
Right. I would say that there is one area that I totally agree with Mr. Joel on, well, there's multiple, but there's one specific, in that we have changed this process internally because of this, I think Commissioner Shemke, as you were hinting at, that we've learned from this process as well, and that is, that going forward, we would engage our own firm to conduct this, because it does put us in a position where there's this back and forth interpretation of, of data, and if we engage our own firm to do it, then it eliminates that, that part of it. So going forward, we will, it will be at the applicant's expense, obviously, but we would engage our own firm to conduct these studies.
Okay. So Olson didn't do any kind of a deficiency review on the road?
The, the study for, on the road itself, the analysis of the surface, I'm not sure how much subgrade analysis was actually done, I don't think they did the full depth borings through the subgrade, but that was all done by the applicant, via Call Valley Engineering, I believe, performed that.
Mm-hmm.
The Cook, Flat, and Strobel did the initial review, and then some of the safety review, but the analysis of the road surface was Call Valley. Olson...
And drainage structures were done by Cook, Flat, and Strobel?
That was, I, I'm not 100% on that, I can't say if it was Cook, Flat, Strobel, or Call Valley, but they were, they did do inspections on them.
And at that point in time, you mentioned Wilson, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't mentioned Wilson.
Wilson really did very little, other than, they, theirs was to review, just to sit down and do a quick review and say, does there need additional study need to be done here? Because there was the statement made about safety at the planning commission meeting. And so they sat down and looked at it and said, yes, you need to go in and do a full review, you have some structures that are failing, you need to make sure and analyze those. So that was their part of it, it was very limited, I think, three weeks.
Okay.
They also came up with the cost of mill and overlay, and also, they came up with the cost of chip and seal over the period of the SGP.
Now, did it come up, this is for staff, it was talked about at the planning commission about the issue about the shoulders. Did that, when we engaged Olson, was there any comments or, or communication or any kind of discussion about the shoulders?
Those were the safety concerns that were brought up, and again, another one of the items that we said, that's, one of the reasons why we're saying, you're going to have to go in and do this work anyways, now is the time to improve this road, so that it will hold up for 20 years or 25 years.
To be clear, I think that was one of the pain points for, you know, anybody that's been, is engaged, is, you know, claims were made where clearly those shoulders don't exist. I will remind everybody, depending on how much time you have, we have over 700 miles roadway, and I assure you, there's tons of them that don't have two-foot shoulders, just to be clear. Doesn't mean I like that, I'm just making that point.
And road lines and ice, taxpayers built that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what kind of exposure do we have, now that we know that we have a road that someone's calling has deficiencies?
This is Commissioner Carr.
Go ahead.
Okay, before we even cut, what we do need to delve into that, I, I have to agree with the Call Valley representation that some of these conditions exist with or without the sand quarries going in at the price. So I think that's something that we need to sit down and have a long discussion about as we impose specific engineering conditions on anyone.
Okay. So is it a consensus that we want to table this till July 15th, give us a week to digest all this?
I would prefer to table it to a date certain.
Well, table it, we all need a certain date. Oh, table it, we don't need a date. I'm good with July 15th, I think I can get through what we got tonight, I mean, I've got through all this, so.
Regular morning meeting?
Yeah, yeah, just be on the agenda.
Is, is there a scenario, again, given the fact that there's been, you know, multiple recommendations internally, several third-party engineering firms, to try to get some amount of collaboration between the Call Valley Engineering Firm, Wilson's review, and ultimately Olson's recommendation? Because it seems like some of this has been piecemealed, again, not by intent, it's moments in time where another study was requested, but, and maybe, and maybe they already have, but it, I've not seen that detailed, but, you know, several presentations and over 1,000 pages later, I also could have missed it, so.
Well, I think as, as you can see by the amount of time that we have already paid Olson on this, and then what Call Valley has also invested through their engineering firms, I think there's been a lot of collaboration back and forth on it, and they just, the engineering firm that represents Call Valley has one opinion, and the engineering firm that represents the county has another opinion. They've worked back and forth, trust me, a lot, and in-person, a lot of in-person meetings, a lot of over the phone. I, that's why I say I just don't see the recommendation by staff changing from what it is currently.
And I'm not suggesting that the recommendation's going to change. One of the challenges I have is, if this was the very first recommendation they would have received, it may have looked very different several months ago or two years ago. But the recommendations have changed because the number of people involved in have changed, both internal staff and outside consultants, and I think that is their frustration point, and I get that. And I think everybody following along is frustrated as hell, and I get that, too.
Well, let me just make my point perfectly clear on that issue, and that is, when we were told we needed to do pavings study to be performed out there, we gave that opportunity to both the county and Olson to go out there to do that study. We were paid for it like suggested, that was refused. Then they said, okay, we said, well, we, we sat there at the meeting and said, tell us where you want these boring tests to be performed and taken, so we don't go out there and do it in the area, you say, oh, you forgot the wrong area, you should have done it over here. So we were given the exact locations of where to do these boring tests. It wasn't something we came up on our own, Olson gave those to us. When I heard only one company had gone out there and done those pavings tests and boring, and that's Call Valley Engineering, they gave a report. Olson didn't enjoy, didn't appreciate the report, didn't agree with the conclusions, but rather basing their request for a new road on new data or new studies that they had performed, they're saying we need a new road out there. And that's, that's where I think the rub is on our part, is that Olson didn't go out there and do any new studies to say that Call Valley Engineering report is effective. It just didn't agree that, you know, it will last 10 years for normal maintenance and repair.
Well, I think part, part of that's also scope, right? There's a, I said, I think part of that's also scope. At the beginning, it was specific and moment in time versus forethought over decades and ultimately planning accordingly. And I'm not saying that's Call Valley's fault.
This was the only scope was given to us by the staff and by Olson Engineer as what the scope of our job responsibility was, because we knew, and I can, I can assure you of this, Jesse and Dan and Zach sat down with Olson, we knew their proposal, the project was clear, and we wanted to avoid...
I don't think that's a fair statement.
In our opinion, okay, I said, I'm tied to opinion. It was clear, we wanted them to tell us what they wanted done, so we didn't go out there and spend more money to come back and say, we should have done A, B, and C rather than D, E. We asked, what are the parameters? They told us what those parameters were, and we followed them to a T. They don't like the results, and they want a new road, but you can look at the record and reflect, everything we did was based on what we were told by Olson Engineering.
We've had very good luck working with Olson in a lot of different projects, you know, they've, they've been really good partners with the county, and it's, and, and they are a regional organization. I don't think they're taking a position on anybody's municipal project.
Well, I mean, like I said, before the 50s, basically, we're here, they may be very, I, I don't have any doubt they're very confident and have a national reputation. I can tell you what we did after that last planning commission, they stole in what we were told to do by staff and by Olson Engineer, and how it's going out there, and wildcat to come up with some kind of test results that would justify our project.
But, go ahead, Vicki.
This is Commissioner Carr. I, I just can't step away from the, the fact that the cost associated with a completely engineered road addressing all of the concerns that have been brought to our attention by local residents in that area, actually most don't have anything to do with truck traffic, it has to do with hazards that have been pointed out to us that pre-exist this application. You know, they, they, before that, they, you know, the last... for there's been accidents and all these things that were assessed, occurred subsequent to any Call Valley land travel potentially be located at that site. So I think that the county has borne some responsibility in addressing some of the safety concerns with or without approval of this WEP.
Okay. Are you okay with tabling for one week?
Yes, I am.
Can you get all your information digested in one week?
I might consider two weeks might be a better amount of time, just to have to digest the conversations that we need to have.
Well, I mean, there's information that we were provided just before the meeting, and there's information that's been provided during...
If it's not the 15th, what's...
15th would be 22nd then, right?
Yes.
It's all...
It's more, it's more light than mine, don't worry.
So what, do you think you need a week, two weeks? What do you think? Any thoughts?
A week is fine with me.
I can do it in a week, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can get right on it in the morning, find out what I need to find out.
Yeah, I'm fine with next week.
I, I personally prefer two weeks, but if you want to do one week, that's...
Well, I think we...
I, I mean, either way.
Kick this thing down the road for long, it's been a while. October of 18, yeah, when I first heard about the proposal. So. Week, everything good with you?
Just waiting on a motion, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And make sure you make it for the date and time, if you would, because it does need to be a date certain.
It has to be, if we table it, it has to be a date certain, it'd be Wednesday at 9 o'clock on July 15th, or Wednesday at 9 o'clock on July 22nd.
Can you do it a week, Vicki?
I can, I can do it in a week, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion that we table this till July 15th, 9 o'clock, regular session.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to table this till July 15th at 9 o'clock. Any further discussion? Voting.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Carr, aye.
All right.
You want us here at this time, or you just...
You can sign up and get on the, and we can, there's public comment for the first 15 minutes on anything that's an agenda item that day.
And again, want to thank everybody that did speak today, and whether it's either in person or via phone, or those that attended, and if there was anything that was cut short or somebody wanted to provide, please be sure to send that to the VOCC email distribution, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is David Van Hert, I had actually been listening all evening.
I know you have.
If I could ask that a point of clarification be made, the public hearing has been closed, so although there could be public comment on the 15th, I think it should be made clear that the public hearing part of this special use permit application has been closed. I think that needs to be made clear.
Okay, everybody, the public hearing will be, is closed, so we will be just public comment on an agenda item. And, so, well, I'd say our public hearing is complete.
Motion to the chairman.
Voting.
Aye.
Aye.